Well, it's December 18th, 2023. Our last zoning hearing and decision-making meeting for 2023. So I hope all of you are enjoying the holiday season. I want to welcome you and those that are watching us on the city's various channels, as well as those of you who have taken the time to come down to be a part of this program tonight, or this meeting tonight. We begin our meeting with an invocation, an expression of inspiration that is all about having us solemnize our experiences during this meeting. And so tonight, we will have Councilmember Dimple Ashmira give our invocation. Please participate if you choose.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy holidays to you all and your family, and thank you so much for being here. This is one of the busiest seasons of the year, and I want to start by saying thank you to everyone that took the time to be here tonight. That just shows how much you value the work that we do and participate in this public discussion. While we know that holidays are stressful and it also brings happiness at the same time, I want to remind you that this is a time of year for togetherness. We pause this day, joining with others across our city, who like us, yearn for peace and harmony and understanding. We pause to celebrate the joy of people coming together, serving one another with common goals and concerns. We pause to ask for blessings on this, our blessings on this, our time together, on gathering like ours, across our land and across the world. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. And now we will have our pledge of allegiance to our flag. Please stand if you choose to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now that we've had those two activities that are for the beginning of our meeting, I'm now going to begin and ask that those on the dais be introduced, and we'll start with our deputy city clerk.
Philly Tons, deputy city clerk.
Impala Ashmira, at large.
Tim Warner Brown, District 3.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Jane Mitchell, at large.
Liz Babson, Assistant City Manager.
Vi Lyle, serving as mayor.
Dante Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1.
Good evening. Ed Drays, District 7.
Tarek Bakari, District 6.
Happy holidays. LaWanna Mayfield, Council at Large.
Good evening. Victoria Watlington, your councilmember, serving at large.
Tyree Higler Gray, Senior Assistant City Attorney.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to go through a brief explanation of the zoning process. The process begins with applications submitted to the planning staff for review. There are two types of cases on the agenda: decisions and hearings. Decisions on cases for which a public hearing has previously been held; there will be no further public comment. Hearings: anyone that wishes to speak is asked to see the clerk before the start of the hearing, and at that point, the staff will give a presentation with no time limit. The petitioner and those in favor get three minutes combined to present a case unless their opponents have signed up to speak. Or if the staff is in opposition, the petitioner gets 10 minutes, opponent gets 10 minutes combined, and petitioner gets a two-minute rebuttal. If no one is opposed or signed up to speak, the staff will give us a short, a very short presentation, and then we will close the public hearing and go to the next one. The petition then goes to the zoning committee of our Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Commission for review and recommendation. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize Douglas Walton, the Chair of the Zoning Committee of the Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Douglas A. Walton, and I serve as the Chairman of the Zoning Committee for the Planning Commission. Allow me to introduce my fellow members who are here with us tonight: Will Russell, Shawna Neely, Rick Winnaker, Terry Lansdale, Rebecca Wildon, and Clayton Seeley. The zoning committee will meet on Thursday, January 4th, at 5:30 PM here at the Government Center. At that meeting, the zoning committee will discuss and make recommendations on the petitions that have a public hearing here tonight. The public is welcome to that meeting, but please note, it is not a continuation of the public hearing that is being held here tonight. Prior to that meeting, you are welcome to contact us and provide your input. You can find contact information for each of the petitions on the city's website at charlotteplanning.org. Thank you, and back to you, Mayor.
Thank you to the Commission. And so we have, at the beginning of our meeting, we recognize that some of the things that have changed as a result prior to the agenda, or after the agenda has been sent out. And so we are going, I'm going to ask Dave Petten to review the deferrals and withdrawals that were on our agenda that we are changing.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have had a few additions since the agenda's been published since Friday. I'll just go in order, starting with item number five. These are decision items. Item five is 2022-161 by the Pulte Group. Item number seven is 2023-032 by Keith Corporation. Item number 19 is 2022-071 by MTB Holdings. Item 20 is 2021-209 by Coastal Acquisition Entity. Item 21, Petition 2023-091 by Mecklenburg County. Item 22, Petition 2022-099 by Levine Properties. Item 23, Petition 2022-134 by Musa Mohammed II. And item 25B is 2023-013 by Toll Brothers Apartment Living. All those are decisions requesting a deferral to January. One exception: item 19, 2022-071 by MTB Holdings, is a withdrawal of the petition. And then we have our hearings that have been requested for deferral. In order, those are item number 26, 2022-121 by RK Investments. Item 27, 2023-033 by CRD Elizabeth. Item 28, 2023-080 by 400 Clement LLC. Item 29, 2022-107 by Park Minow LLC. Item 30, 2023-047 by Gustafson Partners Commercial Real Estate. And item number 50 is 2023-107 by Penworth Holdings. All of those public hearings are requesting a defer to our January 16th, 2024 meeting.
Do we have a motion for our...
Still move, Mayor?
Second.
And we have a motion for our deferrals and withdrawals, as stated by Mr. Petten. Any comment or discussion? Hearing none, all, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Petten, for back to the consent items, what were the two deferrals after number five?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mayfield. I was going to call those out as well. Item five and item seven would then drop off of our consent agenda, so it would be items three through 18, with the exception of those two items that are being deferred through this motion.
So it's only item five and number seven that are deferrals?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. So do we have a motion on the floor? Any further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the deferrals and withdrawals included?
That was another question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Who is...
Sorry, ma'am.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Hearing no proposal, that's no one opposed. That's unanimous. All right. So now, we go to the section of our meeting where we have consent agenda items, and these are items that have to meet the following criteria. One, those items, or those items have no public opposition to the petition at the hearing, the zoning committee recommended approval, there were no changes to the zoning committee's recommendation, and staff recommends approval to, for the petition as well. Are there any consent items that council would like to pull for a question, comment, or a separate vote? All right. Ms. Watlington, followed by Ms. Mayfield.
17, please.
17.
Item 17, Petition 2023-096 by Conformity Corporation. Do you would like to have that...
Deferred for comment.
Deferred until...
Pull for comment.
Pull for a separate vote. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were doing it for the right reason. All right. That will be a separate vote. Ms. Mayfield?
Items, item number 11, 15, and 18 for separate vote.
Item 11?
15.
15?
And 18.
And 18, a separate vote. All right. Any other requests for the consent? Ms. Johnson? Number eight, please. Number eight as well. Okay. Think that that, is that it for the remainder of the consent items? All right. May I have a motion to approve the following petitions? And I do have to read all of these out, so it'll take me a moment, but bear with us. All right. May I have a motion to approve the following petitions and to adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency for each of these petitions as they appear on our agenda as the council's own? Petition 2019-109 by Miriam Franco. Petition 2022-996 by Caro Residential. Petition 2023-001 by Caro Residential. And then we'll skip seven and eight, and we'll go to nine. Petition 2023-064 by South End Walk LLC. Item 10, Petition 2023-077 by BR Properties LLC. Item 12, Petition 2023-081 by M. Industrial Park Property, Charlotte 2 LLC. Petition, item, Petition 13, 2023-082 by Metrolina Storage LLC. Petition number 14 by Rhino Partners Coffee LLC. Petition 16, Petition 23-094 by Josh Jolly, Rosegate Holdings. And petition 17, 2023, item 17, Petition 2023-996 by Conformity Corp. It's a separate vote, sorry. Let me, I got that. 17 is about. All right. So do I have a motion for those that I've read, with the exception of the one that I read that was item 17?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. The motion passes. Now we'll go back to the items that were asked for a separate vote. The first one that I have is item six, Petition 2023-001 by Caro Residential. Who would like to speak to this? All right. Do we have a motion to approve or deny this petition and accept this...
Motion to approve rezoning petition, Mayor.
And adopt the statement of consistency as our own. So any other comments? Any questions? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
It was six, it was five.
All right, so...
It was number five. We just approved six.
I thought we had done six. You're right. So it's number five. Sorry. No, number six, we do have to do.
Who pulled five?
Start with 11.
Start with 11.
No, I pulled 11, 15, 18.
We have a deferred.
Only four deferred. For clarification, Mayor, I only pulled 11, 15, 18.
Five was deferred.
Okay.
Right.
Five is deferred.
Okay. So we're going to go to number seven.
My apologies.
Is number seven...
Was deferred. I'll say I think...
Seven.
Seven was deferred.
Deferred.
We'll start with 11.
All right, deferred. We're going to start with 11, then. Number eight.
Number eight.
I mean, we had a number eight.
Renee, four, eight.
Takes us a moment. This is real-time TV, y'all. All right. Petition 2023-036 by Leon and Jennifer Chiltsom. Item number eight. Do I have a motion to accept the statement of consistency or to deny the petition?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay.
The statement of consistency.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah. I wanted to make a comment. During the public hearing, the staff did not recommend this petition, and I wanted the staff to give an opportunity to speak to that right now on why there was a change.
Sure. They made changes to address the outstanding issues that we had after the public hearing, reduced a few units, and added some potential connectivity to the north, which was some of the items that we had asked for some clarification on and some changes to. So they addressed all the outstanding issues that we had had at the public hearing that went to zoning committee with the favorable staff recommendation, where they also were unanimous in their recommendation for this petition as well. So it was mainly just addressing our outstanding issues, changing some of the design elements, and including that northern piece for connectivity.
Okay. Thank you. So this petition is by a small, it's a small business. It's a couple that actually lives in District 4. I'm excited to support this petition. They did work with the staff. They did work with the residents to get neighborhood support. Mr. Chisholm is actually a part of, Mr. Chisholm is actually a part of the D4 Coalition. So this is the kind of petition that we, that we need more of in the city. It's, they live in the area, they're concerned about the area, and this is what we want for our residents, not to be displaced by growth, but to be a part of it and engaged. So I'm excited to, to support this, and I hope that we see more of this, so that individuals, again, are a part of the, of the growth in the city and, and able to build wealth for their family without being displaced. And again, working with the city and also the neighborhood. So I'm looking forward to supporting this. Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second and a motion. All, any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. All right. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. The next item that we have is item 11, Petition 2023-078 by City Sculpt LLC. Do we have a motion to approve or deny the petition?
Still move.
To approve and accept the statement of consistency. All right. On item number 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any comments or discussion? Ms. Watlington, followed by Ms. Mayfield.
So my question is just, as it relates to the location of this one being Community Activity Center, right there in the midst of NC. It feels like, just looking at it, what one would consider spot zoning, so I just wanted to understand what is the rationale here behind staff's recommendation?
Can you, I'm not sure I understand the question about the activity center.
Yeah. So as I look here, if I'm understanding correctly, you've got Neighborhood Center on all of these parcels, and this one particular parcel is being requested to change to Community Activity Center?
For 078? The, it's actually consistent with the Activity Center.
No, I think we're on 11, aren't we?
We're on 11, which is 078.
Right. And it's going from Neighborhood Center to proposed zoning of Community Activity Center?
Right.
Correct. Yeah. And the Community Activity Center is the adopted place type for the majority of that area around, basically from Moorhead to the north, going up towards 277 and Baxter Street. Do have some regional Activity Center on the other side of McDowell, right up against 277, but it's mainly all Community Activity Center from McDowell, all the way back on the other side of Kennelworth, down to Moorhead. So I'm not, I'm trying to pull up the staff analysis to see which...
Am I misunderstanding this map? It's got Neighborhood Center on all of these parcels?
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah, I'm trying to take a look at that real quick, if it'll pull up for me. It may be that you are, is that the zoning map, or is that the adopted place type map?
It's the zoning map.
Okay. Yeah. So the zoning is all NC around there, and the adopted place type for that area is Community Activity Center, which would be something through the alignment rezoning process. Also, we would look to take that general area to that zoning district to align it with the policy map, so this would be in line with what that, that process would look like going into the next year or so when we get into alignment rezoning. This would be one of those that would go, those parcels that are NC would go to that Community Activity Center to be consistent with that place type long-term. So this just kind of is out in front of some of those efforts.
Okay. So for the same reasons that before I mentioned about the community area planning and the overall process, kind of pieces happening in phase, but ending up in a piecemeal place, I'm not sure that I can support this particular rezoning. Not because I have particular issue with the whole thing going to CAC, but just because as we think about how these individual rezonings are happening in conjunction or ahead of the overall place type realignment, it feels a little premature, and I just don't want to be in a position where we've got parcels that line up because we went ahead early on and made a change, and then get further down in the community area planning process and the policy map process, and find that we want to make an adjustment. So if this was all going at the same time, I may feel differently, but I don't want to create a spot zoning situation in the interim, not knowing what may come in the next year and a half. So for a process reason, that's my hesitation. Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a follow-up question to Councilmember Watlington's, with what we currently have is that is considered Neighborhood Centers. So for the current businesses that are there, as we are looking to make changes, how does that impact the current businesses if they were to do even a minor adjustment to their facility with the changes, if we were to move forward with this in the state of alignment?
They wouldn't have any impact. They would maintain their Neighborhood Center zoning, just the parcel next door, or if they're adjacent to it, would be the CAC zoning, but it wouldn't change any of the elements of their allowed uses or anything that they currently have today.
So one of the challenges I have that I sent out to full council earlier today is going to be in reference to this item, item 15 and 18, and that is the fact that it's a conventional rezoning, since conventional rezoning petitions have no associated site plan. When the 2040 plan was approved, there was no way that anyone could have, well, you had scientists that anticipated, but everyday people would not have anticipated a worldwide pandemic, nor would they have anticipated the amount of growth thanks to investors, both domestic and internationally, that have come specifically into the Charlotte market and is changing our landscape drastically by still working through conventional rezonings that just gives this umbrella with no identified site plan. That causes a challenge for me. When we know today, from 2021 to 2023, we have major challenges and gaps of affordability for business space, for small businesses, and even medium-sized businesses, for access to housing, diverse price point, in order to make sure that our workers can afford to live in the city and not live outside of the city. We say the 2040 plan is a living document, but we have yet to have a real conversation of what is our plan as a council for how we want to see Charlotte grow? And are we going for residents that may be moving in, or are we going at a level to ensure that our residents that are here, that we are investing millions of dollars in through resources and other avenues, are we helping them to stay in our city or to graduate and come back to our city? I would like for us to add this for our upcoming January retreat. I was hoping the manager would have been here tonight, but we do have representation from the manager's office. So I would like for us to actually have a policy discussion, which is why I didn't move for a deferral tonight, but I would not be able to support this because right now, as we just blanketly approve conventional petitions with no associated site plan, and just say it can be anything under this umbrella... and just say it can be anything under this umbrella and not really taking stock of what's happening in the community, I think we very well may be setting ourselves up for the service that other communities are going to be facing in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. All right, are there any other comments regarding the item number eleven? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You already have one.
We have a motion on the floor to approve and accept the statement of consistency as our own. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
All who oppose?
All who oppose. Two, two in opposition. Thank you. All right, the next item is petition number fifteen. Petition, item fifteen, petition twenty twenty-three zero ninety by West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition. Do I have a motion to approve or deny this petition?
Which one are you on?
We're on item fifteen. It is the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition's request.
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve and adopt the statement of consistency as our own. Is there, and there's a second? Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll start with Ms. Mayfield. I believe, Ms. Ashmira, did you also request?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And for the record and the minutes, the same concerns that I just shared with regarding item eleven. Even though we have invested a lot of funding throughout the West Boulevard corridor, and I'm glad to see that we're having movement, I do have some concerns regarding how this is going to move forward because it is a conventional petition request. And again, as we have seen specifically throughout the West Boulevard corridor for the eight years that I served as the representative, we put a lot of work and investment and time into helping the community that live there. Unfortunately, a lot of those residents are not there throughout the corridor today. And those that are are facing financial challenges due to the rapid growth that has happened. So this will be another one that I will not be able to support just under the basis of consistency in it being a conventional rezoning request.
All right, Ms. Watlington?
Thank you. This particular one, I'm happy to support. I just wanted to say kudos to the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition. It's a huge milestone to get to the next step in support of the Three Sisters Market and bringing grocery and community-owned, community-driven retail to this area. So thank you for all those who have been involved and look forward to what happens next.
All right, anyone further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the petition, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All right, thank you, one in opposition. All right, the next item is for a separate vote is petition twenty twenty-three dash zero ninety-six by Conformity Corp., item number seventeen. Do I have a motion to approve or deny this petition?
Seventeen was the one.
I thought it was eighteen.
We have eighteen and seventeen.
Okay.
Okay, seventeen, we're on seventeen now. We have a motion to approve and adopt the statement of consistency and a second. Any further, any comments, anyone wish to discuss? Okay, all in favor of this? I'm sorry.
I just had a, I just wanted to hear real quick, just for the record from staff. As you look at this one here, you've got it in N one B. It's next to N two B. But when you look at the way the parcels are cut, it would seem that it would fit more in the N one B. So I just wanted to hear, just for the record, the explanation of why the staff is in support of this one moving over to Ashley Road and what that may mean for the parcels that are in N one B immediately to the north.
Sure. The request was consistent with the adopted policy map for N two on this location. So an N two request aligned with what the adopted policy was. For the N one parcels, they'll have height protections built in to the, to the project. So if there is buildings within a certain distance, one hundred, two hundred feet, there are some height restrictions that may kick in to keep the building height at a comparable spot to what's around it. But generally, it was consistent with the adopted place type for that location there at the corner, Ashley and Lumina and Greenland. So that was where we were comfortable with an N two request coming in.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments? All in favor of the item with, as our state, in adopting the consistency statement as our own? Please raise your hand. All right, anyone opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, the next item is item eighteen, number eighteen. It is petition twenty twenty-three dash one two three by Charlotte Two One Two LLC. Do I have a motion to approve or deny this petition? So moved. A motion to approve or deny?
Approve.
Approve. So do I have a second? Do I have a second? So do, is there any discussion? Ms. Mayfield?
For the sake of brevity, if the city clerk can just copy and paste and drop that into eighteen as well. For the consistency sake of a conventional rezoning, let's just add that in. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayfield, I think we have twenty-five more conventionals. Would that be your wish for the clerk?
We haven't gotten to those.
We haven't gotten to them yet, I got you. Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and we have approval for this item. Anything further? All right, thank you very much. Now, do we have any items for changes before the?
Do not.
Oh, we have to vote.
Yeah, we have to vote on this.
We'll move on real fast, y'all, if we didn't have to do that, wouldn't we? All right, item eighteen, all in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, so now, do we have any items that we have to have where changes were made after the zoning committee's recommendation?
Not, not this evening, no. We did have one, it was deferred, so.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we will now go to the next portion of our agenda, which, after we have the withdrawals, the next item Dave is?
We should have two decisions, which would be items twenty-four and twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four. Let's go to item twenty-four, petition twenty twenty-one two seventy-seven by Bildum LLC, approximately four tenths of an acre on the east side of Providence Road, north of Philal Place, south of Colonial Avenue in District Six. The current zoning is Office Flex Campus. The proposed zoning is Neighborhood Center Conditional. The zoning committee recommended and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Is there a motion to accept?
To adopt and approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick note for everyone. We heard a couple things in the hearing around the neighbors' concerns around office hours and timing of utilization. I've been informed that over the last month, they worked through that with the petitioner and put some further requirements around times of operation. So I'll be supporting this.
And accepting the statement of consistency as our own? Please raise your hand. All right, anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much, and that one goes on. And the next one is item twenty-five. Approximately six acres located on the east side of Ashley and south of Allegheny in District Two. The current zoning is multifamily and the neighborhood two biz B is the recommendation. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to approve the petition and accept the statement of consistency as our own?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? All right, no, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item twenty-five B has been deferred, so we go right in.
I've got one, one item of housekeeping. I missed a deferral for our hearings this evening. So we just need to take action on a deferral request for item number forty-eight.
Item forty-eight.
Yeah, apologize for this. It is twenty twenty-three dash one zero three by Range Water Development. And they are requesting a deferral of their hearing to January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, you've heard the staff recommend and a request for a deferral. We have a motion and a second. Any comment or questions? All in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. One, two. Item forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. It's in District One. Okay, now, let's see the hands in favor. Anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, the proposed for deferral is approved. All right, Mr. Petten. And so now, our next item for action would be. I'm looking to getting past all the deferrals. Is it item thirty-two?
Yes, excuse me, item thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, text amendment, yes.
Item thirty-one is a resounding petition by the Planning and Design and Development Committee of Charlotte. And the purpose of this text is to make minor changes that will result in better functionality of the UDO. Changes are proposed in twenty-three of the thirty-nine articles. These changes include updated language to provide greater clarity, updated graphics, new and updated definitions, adjustments to use permissions and prescribed conditions, revised name, revised use names and minor changes. In additions to standard, the staff recommends approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to approve this petition and move forward?
Well, we're just, just doing a hearing.
I'm sorry, we're in a hearing.
That's all right.
All right, so we're going to have a hearing on this. And do I see any speakers on this item? We don't have any speakers on this item. So any questions for the staff on this item? Hearing no questions?
He probably is.
We'll run through a great, yeah.
Presentation.
Just the present, I didn't know you had, all right, we'll go through the presentation.
We'll go through a brief presentation, yes, ma'am. All right, so as mentioned, we have a text amendment. This is our second cleanup to the UDO. This is a strictly, basically, an administrative-type cleanup. Doesn't have any overarching policy changes or things that would affect anything related to our adopted policies that we've got. This is really just, again, a cleanup text amendment. This is our second one. Both internal and external users have identified these needed changes as we've gone through the last six months or so using the document and applying it. You learn about little things that need some tweaks and corrections. So this text amendment is bringing forward what we've learned so far that needs some attention and some adjustment. Should provide a little bit more user-friendly ordinance and a little bit better functionality for us. We do have a redline version. I didn't wanna print a six-hundred-some-page document for your notebook. So we did include that at the charlotteudo.org website. It's also linked digitally in our agenda materials that are found on the Legistar site. So just to jump into what's in the amendment, we did have a community engagement for this item, posted the changes on the UDO website, publicized this through social media, had mailing lists and UDO website subscribers where we shared information with those folks. Also had two virtual public engagement sessions on October eighteenth that had a total of ninety-four attendees. So what will this text amendment do? Really just clarify, as I mentioned, and make some minor adjustments. We realized that we didn't have a timeframe on some of our affordable housing standards that are in the ordinance. So things like our bonuses, where folks may contribute to affordable housing or provide that on-site. We didn't have a timeframe, so we've called that out and added that clarity. Refined standards for driveways and parkings for duplex, triplex and quadruplexes. Stated that accessory structures need to be located on the same parcel as the principal structure they serve. We do have minimum-maximum vehicle parking requirements for places of worship that we corrected in this text amendment. Also clarified lot standards don't apply to sublots and allows multifamily stack development to front on common open space. And also addresses some code enforcement concerns regarding vehicle parking and storage. Getting into the next slide on this, does also provide greater flexibility in design for our parking structures. It also adjusts prescribed conditions for neighborhood commercial establishments and accessory drive-throughs. Does prohibit outdoor entertainment as an accessory use in Neighborhood One and also renames our drive-through facilities as an accessory drive-through. There was some confusion with some of the terminology, so we cleaned that up. Also created a commercial fitness center as a use and then provided an electronic sign permission for private recreation clubs. Also clarified, we had some provisions in there regarding existence of accessory drive-throughs being allowed as a continuous use. We did not clarify that they need to be in operation as of June first, twenty twenty-three, so we added that language in there. Also added a prescribed condition that a restaurant or a bar that would have an accessory drive-through has to have a minimum of twenty-four seats, indoor/outdoor. Got into clarifying sidewall heights for residential buildings, stating that those cannot be increased by just shifting your building away from that side lot line or side setback. Also updated the sidewall illustrations, added a time period for temporary uses, clarified some general definitions in Article Two, and also clarified limitations on uses and structures that are allowed in the setbacks. So again, a lot of those changes, it's a lot to potentially digest, but all of those are clarifying items, cleanup items. Again, don't really get into overarching policy items that need to have, you know, a little bit more direct attention to them. This is, again, just a cleanup amendment. A lot of administrative items and things that we found after using this for six months internally and externally, just items that need to be addressed and cleaned up and better clarified. So we are recommending approval of the petition. Would be consistent with the overall goals of the comprehensive plan. And we'll take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for the staff on the text amendment? Mr. Driggs?
Thank you. I appreciate that this work is being done. We knew that we were going to keep fine-tuning. I'm just wondering, on any of these points, was there a significant pushback or debate with anybody? Or has the acceptance of this with the people you talked to been pretty universal?
We haven't heard too much of any pushback. We don't have anybody here, you know, purporting against it this evening. So I feel like we've done a pretty good job with our outreach. Having ninety-four attendees at our engagement back in October was a little bit of a surprise to us. But I think that also shows that people are paying attention to the work that's being done and coming out of that, not having any significant concerns that we've been, you know, made aware of. I think we're in good shape to keep this moving forward. Move to approve.
All right, I have another, I have another comment. Mr. Bakari, followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Yeah, I would just add, and again, just for the public's sake, there's the cleanup that we're doing that will be an ongoing process. But then there's also the process by which we get there. And I think there's, one of the things that we're experiencing is, as we find cleanup items, there are multiple departments of staff that are looking at separate things that aren't necessarily a if, then, do it. And that's creating a bit of a new bottleneck and a stack up. So all I'd ask is for us to make sure we continue staying very diligent as we're learning and fixing these items, that we also don't slow things down to a halt and we stay real nimble because I'm starting to hear a little more and more feedback about that.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know that several folks had reached out to us about impacts on that, on density. And I know I had connected them with Allison and others. I wanted to just make sure that how would this in any way impact the density concerns that were raised? And are any other significant changes that we should be mindful of?
So this, I don't think this will have any real direct impacts on addressing that concern. I think the one element that's built into this is that clarification on the sidewall heights. That was a little bit of point of, just some conversation that we've had over the last six months about how those are being applied and could you make your sidewalls taller as you moved away from the setback? With clarifying that, that helps us to build in, when we see some of those infill projects, a little bit more guidelines to kinda keep us in context with what's around us. But I think when we get into the conversation more about how the UDO is gonna continue to address that density question that we've had, I think that's where we get back to that referral that we've all been kinda working on and really trying to get arms around some really good solutions to present to y'all to consider. That will be its own separate process and its own separate, very intentional conversation. This is just to try to clarify some administrative items.
Okay, so in terms of any setbacks or, I don't see any significant changes that would result in significant reduction or increase in the density at this point, at least under this clarification.
Yeah, it'll essentially maintain the baseline that we are in right now.
Okay, so it's pretty much aligned with what we had approved under the UDO last year? And just clarifying language, okay?
Yeah, yeah, the cleanup items are gonna be items that are addressing these types of administrative things. And we get into the more policy-based UDO text amendments, those are gonna be individual petitions to focus on just that issue and that issue alone. So that's when we'll come back and we'll present that when it's, we get through that process of continuing to study that referral that we've all been kinda working on for a little while now.
Okay, no, I think that's fair enough. I know there was an email that was sent and I forward that, I did forward that to Allison. I just wanna make sure we respond and clarify that there is no significant changes as a result of this text amendment. This is just more clarifying it.
Correct, yeah.
To address the concern that was raised by one of the residents who reached out. Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Petten, you may have just answered this question. I wanted to follow up on the issue that was referred to staff in, in May regarding the duplexes and the existing communities. We were told then that it would take about six months, so I wanted to kind of get an update on that.
Yeah, we are, I, it's, I will just say, it's been a very challenging item. I think we've all kind of tried to get our arms around as best we can, but it is a complicated item, because there's impacts across the board depending on what kind of scenario and what kind of solutions we might pose. We need to understand all the other kind of impacts or domino effect of where they might, you know, fall into place. So we're, I think, getting close to having some solutions to pose to y'all, and I think we'll probably get into talking about those in the upcoming TPD sessions in 2024, and I feel like we're getting to a point where we, we feel like we're getting close with some things we want to put on y'all's plate to give us some feedback on, but we just need a little bit more refinement and working with some of our internal partners on, on what we've got kind of as we process it out. So it should be, should be coming sooner than later, but it's not a, not a straightforward solution to try to come to with such a, you know, complex issue.
You said the upcoming what session?
And TPD in twenty-four, so I know we kick off our TPD meetings in January. I'm not sure what, when this one will fall as far as what agenda it might be on, but I think that's the plan, is to come back and talk to that group.
Your committee, our committee. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Petten, well, just for clarification, because the conversation was started many years ago, while you're doing the updates, are you and your team also having discussions regarding the possibility of tiny homes in our area since that is something that has come up more than once?
Good question. I don't know for sure. Let me find out and talk to the, the folks that are really focused on UDO changes and see if we've had some conversations and what we might be able to share. I can get that to you in a separate email follow-up.
Thank you.
All right. I think, do I have a motion? Any other speakers? If there are no other speakers, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, not having any? So on, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. Anyone opposed? All right, so our next public hearing, and will be, the next three, we will have people that will be speaking for and against, and so we will have those longer time limits of ten minutes for the petitioner when they have someone working against. Both sides would have that time. All right, so our first petition is item thirty-two? Thirty-two. And, hold on, Mr. Brown, let me just get the thirty-two. All right, we just did our, thirty-two is twenty, petition twenty-twenty-three-zero-thirty-seven by Shinville Ridge Partners. The location is one-point-two acres on the north side of Fairview. It's in District Six. The current zoning is one-A urban, the proposed is urban residential. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolutions of issues on site and building design. And our first speaker at this hearing is Colin Brown, and then Matt Langston and Craig Gorley, who will speak against the petition. Mr. Gorley will speak against the petition. All right, Mr. Brown.
Don't you, you want to toss it to him?
I'm sorry, no, I would really like to hurry and move along here, I guess, a little bit. You can tell it's been a long week already.
I'll keep us going, don't worry.
All right, go ahead, we'll have the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Be short, Dave.
Twenty-twenty-three-zero-three-seven, that's one-point-two acres on Fairview, just across from Close Burn Road and Wintercrest Lane, getting close to the intersection there with Park Road. As mentioned, currently zoned N-1A, proposed zoning, this is a legacy request to UR2 conditional. The place type, as mentioned, is Neighborhood One, but we do have a good bit of Neighborhood Two on either side, on the Fairview Road, and then just down on the same side of Fairview as this petition, just to the west of us. The request is for up to fourteen single-family attached units. They would be served by an internal street. The guest parking spaces have been provided in this site plan as well. One point of access would be onto Fairview Road. They would also install a twelve-foot-wide multi-use path, eight-foot-wide planning strip on Fairview. All principal and accessory structures would be comprised of a combination of brick, stone, stucco, cementous siding. No vinyl would be permitted on the site except for handrails and window soffits and things of that nature. So also have notes that include units that would have frontage on Fairview, would contain a porch or a stoop that would wrap a portion of the front and side of the unit so that it presents a little bit better, excuse me, to, to the road itself. Does limit the number of dwelling units in one building when fronting on Fairview Road to six. Specifies that for units fronting Fairview, they will provide a blank wall provisions that would limit that expanse to twenty feet on all levels. Garage doors will not front Fairview. They also provided an eight-foot-wide Class C buffer along with a fence, and also notes that the petitioner would work with Charlotte Water. There is an easement, sanitary sewer easement on the property just on the backside, and they would work with Charlotte Water to see if that could be potentially abandoned. At this time, staff does recommend approval. Would do have some outstanding issues related to site and building design to work through. The petition is inconsistent for Neighborhood One, but it is in a good location for some infill of this nature. Property has an interesting history as well. It was actually zoned for multifamily for a decent period of time until recently, I think in the last two years. There were some deed restrictions that required it to be rezoned back to single-family. Those have since, I believe, been lifted, which is why we see a return to that original request, which I think this actually is coming in with less units and less dense than the initial multifamily approval that was granted many years ago. So I'll let the petitioner share some of that background with y'all as well, but we will turn it over to them and the public, and we'll take any questions following the presentations. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Colin Brown, on behalf of the petitioner Shinville Ridge Partners. Good overview by Dave. I don't have a whole lot to add, but if we could pull our slides up. This is in the South Park area. Madam Mayor, in your, at least former neck of the woods, here it is. So you've got the core of South Park, obviously Fairview being a very major thoroughfare coming, running east and west. Here's the property there. I've got the star on. As you can see, in the, in the area, we've got a good bit of more intensive development around the site. Across the street, we've got multifamily. We've got multifamily here. And the product type that we're talking about would be a townhome product, very similar to what's across the street. So I think this is an infill project that makes sense. As you can see, you know, what we're talking about, this is a great infill project, major thoroughfare, walkable to employment, walkable to food and beverage, a lot of things we're going for. It is a one-point-two acres, which is a good size for an infill site. Here's the zoning map. As Dave mentioned, previously, this site was zoned URC. We're requesting UR2, but now it is not, so it's a little bit of a wedge surrounded by everything more intense on the zoning map. And if we go to the policy map, you can see we've got the kind of most intense blue, and then we have multifamily in this area. And here, we've got that lower density, which we feel like we're pretty consistent with. As Dave mentioned, we are doing, to Ms. Mayfield's point earlier, this is a conditional zoning. So there's a site-specific plan confirming it would be a townhome-type product with fourteen units, which is under twelve units per acre, pretty similar to what's out there now. Commitment to mixed-youth path that we need to see all the way along Fairview Road. There's just dropped in, so you can see this developing, these units, I think, match pretty well with what we see across the street, lower density than a lot, and then as we transition into the core of South Park. I know there's a speaker in opposition, so I'll keep my presentation short and follow-up after that.
All right, Ms. Watton? Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to hear from Mr. Langston. And Mr. Gorley. You're good? All right, so Mr. Gorley, are you Mr. Gorley? Craig Gorley? Please come down and join us.
Great holiday garb, by the way.
Thank you.
Mayor Lyles and councilmembers, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Craig Gorley, and I'm delivering a statement on behalf of the Board of Trustees for South Park City Homes, HOA. If you look at the map, you can see City Homes Place.
We'll have to...
Well, yeah. Anyway, we're adjacent and right across the street from the proposed area. We're concerned about two significant problems that can result from the proposed development: stormwater drainage and dangerous traffic patterns. The stormwater drainage from the proposed development will flow under Fairview Road and discharge into a tree-save area behind the row of homes on City Homes Place. And you can, you can barely see that, you can't actually see that on that map. During intense storms, the water flow to this area is already significant and has gotten much worse over the last few years, now spilling into our tree-save area and endangering a retaining wall, which abuts the foundation of, I think, about four or five homes along that road. The, the petitioner's site plan states simply that it will comply with the post-construction stormwater ordinance. We understand that if rezoning is approved, the developer intends to construct an underground retention basin to comply with the stormwater ordinance. However, our concern is that simply designing this retention system to the minimum requirements of the stormwater ordinance will be insufficient to prevent or even mitigate the possibility of damage to our property. Specifically, our concern is that applicable design storms that are utilized in the stormwater design manual don't actually reflect what's happening in our climate now. Storms so frequently exceed applicable design storms that there is often far more runoff, higher volume, and/or higher velocity of the runoff in reality than is anticipated by the, by the city ordinance. So that's a larger conversation than just this rezoning petition. But we do know that for specific topographical reasons, our townhome community and our neighbors to the south are particularly vulnerable to impacts from excessive stormwater runoff. In order to preserve a tree-save area adjacent to our property, one of the true natural areas in the neighborhood, a retaining wall was constructed just to the south of the townhomes along Fairview-Villa Court. This wall is not structural, but it did allow for the tree-save area to be preserved and is vulnerable to damage from erosion from excessive runoff. And again, the runoff from Fairview Road and the new proposed development comes under Fairview Road and empties right behind our whole townhome area. If, if that retaining wall is damaged, not only will the repairs be expensive for the responsible parties, but any repairs will necessarily impact the trees in the tree-save area. In addition, a creek, that creek runs south from our property, eventually meeting Lower Sugar Creek, and excessive stormwater and sedimentation has the potential to erode that creek and impact aquatic wildlife and vegetation. So we're in something of a chicken-and-egg situation, since the developer has indicated that it is, that it is not willing to pay to advance a civil design for the project until the rezoning is approved. This makes sense, but it makes it difficult for us as neighbors to know how to reasonably respond to the rezoning petition. In an ideal world, we would ask that the developer construct a more robust stormwater system than required by the stormwater ordinance of the city in order to reduce the volume and velocity of flow of water onto our townhome community property and the downstream creek beds. We also would ask that specific improvements be made with regards to traffic planning to address increased traffic and a changed traffic plan. You can see from Park Road over to South Park, that area is just rapidly, rapidly increasing in volume. The number of vehicles may be few into that development, but the increase in left turns from Fairview traveling east will exacerbate what is already a congested and problematic stretch of roadway. We believe that these concerns can be mitigated through traffic planning and possibly even putting in a left-turn lane in that area. We look forward to further discussion with the developer and with staff as this process continues to achieve a cost-effective solution to the potential problems caused by the proposed rezoning. So thank you for your attention. I'm sorry that went on so long, but it's sort of a complicated, you know, water is sneaky.
Yeah.
That's, that's the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Brown, do you want two minutes for your rebuttal?
Yes, very quickly, and if I could have our slides, really to acknowledge, these issues were raised to us at the community meeting. We have been out to the site. Our engineer has been out there more than once to look at it. And generally, I'd say, I haven't heard, you know, any feedback to say that, oh, a townhome project is not appropriate here. I think it's the issues that were highlighted. And just to put some color to that, this is, this is the townhome community that the speaker resides in, and there is a storm pipe under Fairview Road. So we would build our facility, it would connect, the stormwater would be piped under Fairview, and it discharges here. This is the open space area that he was referring to, so we're aware of that. Our design team has been in contact with city engineering, and we're evaluating what options there might be to address that. So again, we're in a conditional zoning environment. It is possible to go over and above and commit to some additional things. Obviously, we wanted to have a hearing, see if there was anything else, you know, that came out of the pipe, literally. So we're aware of stormwater, happy to continue conversations with that. I know that's on the, on the radar of our, of our council member. As far as traffic as well, one of the goals is, one of the hopes of the rezoning is, is you, you know, again, I think something would be, something will be developed here. We think our rezoning plan gives us the best bet to have one point of access to the site so we can line that up. We have actually had some conversations with the property owner here to maybe give them driveway access as well. So we've got some issues outstanding with CDOT that we expect to work through. So, long story short, our expectation is that we, we feel, like, and we may hear other feedback from you, those are two items that we're aware of and can work with both the city and the community, and maybe add some, some conditions to address those concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations and feedback, Mr. Gorley. So I think what I'd like to do, because I've been in communication with, with, with both sides of this project, is the takeaway over the next month to see what we can solve. First, with staff, Dave, if you can help me get an answer, I think, to the bigger macro question that we just heard now, which is, you know, post-construction stormwater requirements, where are we in relation to what they are doing at or above the line? And is that line appropriate? I think there's, as, as was mentioned, a bigger macro picture here, which we have to step back and say, are we no longer properly aligned with what our minimum requirement should be, to an extent, and a belief that we would need to press pause on this? Because I don't think there's any scenario, I'd be comfortable at least, making a, a one-off transactional decision on that assumption here if we weren't looking at the macro lens. So I think that, that's one big takeaway that I can only do with you guys, and I'd like to get to that basis. I think in parallel, what, what we should probably do here is, on the focus on just the overall tactical elements of the stormwater, are there other things we can do? And I think Colin just mentioned a couple of things to look at as it relates to the basin and other items. Is there something that can be done above and beyond now, where if our answer on the macro citywide policy item is no, or not now, we at least have something to address where we are and where we understand that? And then secondly, with the transportation piece, this is the Groundhog Day broken record of major corridors where developers come in, and it's another chance that we get to talk about, whether it's Fairview, or Sharon, or Providence, or insert big name here, the pain it is to travel on those, those roads today, the brutal congestion that are experienced, and the fact that we are still not doing anything at a macro level to do anything out of the box, other than treading water and what we've been doing. And really, the only time we materially talk about is during rezonings. So when we're at a three- or four-hundred-unit rezoning, you know, I, I think that might have me in a slightly different mindset. In a fourteen-unit rezoning here, where when you look at it by right, they could still have ten, not that, that, that massive of a thing for us to go re-litigate and refight the entire UDO, but I think it's enough where I'd ask you, Colin, and the development team to see where we could get creative, and where can we find ways to mitigate the traffic additionally? I'm not putting it on your doorstep, but it's a problem, it's a reality for everyone who lives there. And are there other things that we could get creative with the neighbors in this month, given if the other questions don't come to a certain outcome? Are there ways where we could find enhancements for crosswalks and, and the transportation, the walkability from these folks into their activity centers and things like that? So not an answer, but a roadmap for the next thirty days, where we'll look at the macro citywide policy elements of stormwater and where we should be, and then the micro kind of transactional concession-based approach of this petition and where we can find middle ground should we not decide to kind of hit a macro pause there. And I think if everyone operates in good faith, thirty days is a, is a good amount of time for us to, to move forward on that.
Thank you. Ms. Eszmera? Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with some of the comments that were made by my colleague. In terms of the stormwater runoff, I know that's an issue that we often hear about. And I know as part of our UDO process, there were several tools that were put in place to address the stormwater, um, runoff, and I know there are stricter requirements under the UDO. So, um, Mr. Patton, if you can just walk us through the changes that are required under the UDO and how that has improved the overall process? And do we need to consider even reviewing that further to see what additional discussion that council needs to consider as part of the process?
Certainly so. I'm, I'm definitely not a stormwater expert, so I don't have, uh, a really good baseline to kind of share. I know there were changes that addressed projects like this, infill projects, projects of a certain size are handled differently than they were under our previous ordinance. We can get those details to you. I can reach out to stormwater, uh, as part of this overall follow-up and, and share some of that with you as well.
Yeah, and I would also like, if you could share it with a speaker who had signed up to speak against?
Yep.
And I'd like to hear from them as to what additional measures that we should consider as part of the process? Because I know we went through this, there was a deeper dive discussion on this. I know our former council member, Julie Isel, was definitely passionate about this, and she had certainly, um, uh, provided feedback along this process. And I just want to, I thought we were at this place that was sort of, um, a good place that addressed the concerns, but from what you're, what you had shared, certainly that's, that's not enough. So we need to really take a deeper dive into this and address this.
And just to, with one point of clarification on it, so this is a legacy request, so this wouldn't fall in under UDO standards, but we can certainly look to what some of those changes were to see if there's elements that can be potentially brought in and incorporated into the conditions, uh, to help to kind of ease some of those concerns, so.
Right, but this will still fall, it will at least, the UDO will still apply here.
And this would be permitted under the UR2 district if it gets approved, uh, but what, because it's conditional, there are potentially, if there's, the petitioner's willing, uh, they could look at some of the standards that we might have currently and see if there's things that help to offset the concerns we're hearing. Uh, they can pull them from old ordinance, new ordinance, they'd just be part of the conditional rezoning, so.
And I think that's what Mr. Brown was alluding to earlier, that part, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Driggs?
So yeah, thanks. A couple of things, um, I, I have some petitions in my district where there's an existing flooding situation. The petitioner is liable, under our rules, for not making a situation worse, for mitigating to where the runoff is the same as before. When you had an existing flooding situation on Tom Short Road, for example, I don't think you can reasonably put that on the petitioner. I think the city has a responsibility there. So I would like to see an outcome where we engage with stormwater services and take this opportunity to solve an existing problem and then to get the petitioner to, uh, address their own creation of runoff. Uh, the other question I had was, is this under the old, uh, ordinance, this petition?
Yes, yeah, this was submitted prior to our January 31st deadline, so.
So I do have a question about that. I think everybody is probably aware, I hope, that we have deadlines in place in January and February for hearings and decisions under the old ordinance. Now, I have a couple of situations, and I think other people do, where that's going to be hard to meet. And it's not because of the negligence on anybody's part, but these were big, complicated actions, and the staff worked on them, and then we had extended engagement with the community. And if you followed my experience on Gillespie, for example, for the last year, you know what I mean. So what we don't want is to get kind of jammed on completion for the ones that are legitimately taking longer. And therefore, I'm wondering if the staff has given any thought to, to proposing a modification to those deadlines.
Yeah, certainly. We've, we've talked about that with something we're definitely considering bringing forward to y'all, uh, in January for some consideration. Uh, there are petitions that are still kind of out there lingering that, like you said, are, are larger, complex. They've taken a lot of time, uh, for transportation reviews, a lot of time for community engagement. We've also heard, you know, from the community that they don't want to feel like the timeline is too compressed and they have to rush through, you know, this process because there is this March 1st deadline for things to be decided on. Uh, so yeah, our anticipation is that we will have, uh, something for you to consider in January that would move that deadline date back to make it a little bit more reasonable for everybody involved, but we also, like I said, want to make sure the community has enough time to stay involved in those processes even after that hearing occurs and give everybody enough time to continue to work and coordinate after a hearing to get to a point where, you know, hopefully we've addressed as many issues as possible. So yeah, anticipate coming, uh, that coming to y'all in January.
So that would be offered for council action in January?
Yes, it would have to be, uh, something that council would take action on. It was part of the, it's a little confusing, it was part of the ordinance that implemented the ordinance of the UDO. So we have to then go back and, and make a change to that. Uh, wouldn't change any of the other effective dates, it doesn't change any aspect of the, uh, UDO's effectiveness or its implementation. It would literally just be that date of March 1st, make it shifted to another deadline to, and it may be a tiered system where we have to have hearings done by a certain time and decisions done by another, uh, because we all know on cases like this and others, we have the hearing, sometimes it takes three, four months to work through everything. We want to make sure everybody has enough time to get through that.
So I, I don't need to tell you that since the, the deadline is in January for hearings, uh, the sooner you can get that to us, the better.
So the, the, well, the deadline would be March 1st for any legacy petition has to have a decision rendered. So that would put us at our February meeting. So you're correct, January would be the hearing unless we've already had it. February, we would have to have had the decision, which, as we know, there's some petitions that aren't quite close to, to getting there yet.
Right, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, to marry the two discussions. We talked about last week, the infrastructure update, and, um, and this might be a question for planning, but we talked about the infrastructure update and stormwater being one of those items. This is the reason for those questions about the infrastructure and about the, uh, the specific areas. Are there areas that are beyond acceptable levels? So this is the kind of information that we need, the council needs specifically about areas like this. We all know that we hear this all the time, the stormwater and the traffic. And the residents, they, they live with this every day. So we need to know what, where, what level are we at, or what is the level in areas like this so that we can make informed decisions and responsible decisions? So how do we get that information? Is, um, I know we talked about getting an update during our strategic planning session? So will we be able to get, like, maps or certain areas so that we can review? The reason that I pushed for the infrastructure discussion was for the, for moments like this. So how are we obtaining or getting that information so that we can practically use it?
Sure. So I know on this petition, stormwater, their only comments were really about the easement that existed and the, the line that existed on the property. They didn't express any concerns about the project itself. Doesn't mean that there aren't some items that neighbors are dealing with out there, just that they don't have any significant concerns from their infrastructure standpoint for this particular petition. But as far as getting the information you're, you're talking through, I think I'd need to sit down and, and follow up with our stormwater folks to see what, I, I didn't have a chance to go back and watch the conversation from last week on, on some of those items, so need to really follow up with them and see where some of that is and, and what they're anticipating, uh, providing for that conversation so we can get that to you in a follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I believe that covers everyone that wanted to speak to the item on the agenda. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Ms. Watlington, did you want?
He did.
Don't worry about it.
I'm sorry, I did not see your hand. All right, um, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. All right, anyone object to that? All right, our next item is petition number 33. For Raven Partners. Approximately 80 acres located on the east side of East Independence Boulevard, north of Hayden Way, west of Sam Newell. It's in District 5, and, um, the requested zoning is Neighborhood 1B, N2B, 2B, CG. Um, the staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to environment and site and building design. So we'll hear from the staff, and in this case, we have Mr. Brown and Stewart and Sean Potwin, um, speaking for, but also I wanted to, um, prepare those that are concerned, Rich Scher, Scherutka, I hope, I may, I'm sorry if I did not say that very well. Beth St. Martin, Sherry Sigmund, Jean Hoover, and Michelle Braun. And so when you have a lot of speakers, you still have just the 10 minutes. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So we'll start with Mr. Brown, and then the first speaker against would be Rich. I'm, I'm just saying until we get to the speaker. And then we'll, um, Mr. Rich Scare, I am not saying this very correctly, so, but you know who you are. All right.
It's not Scarekka?
Scarekka?
I think so.
So, okay, so, um, we'll hear from the staff, and then Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2023-069, it's 80 acres. Uh, it's on Independence Boulevard, it's, uh, on the other side where Sardis Road North, uh, tees into East Independence Boulevard. Uh, it is currently zoned N1B and N2B. Uh, you can see the, the property's kind of split zone there with the N2 on the front end, N1 on the back end. Requested zoning is to maintain both N1B and N2B still on the property and incorporate some, uh, commercial areas under the CG district. All of those districts would be conditional, this is a conditional petition. Uh, the adopted place type does show, uh, Neighborhood 1 and some small area of Neighborhood 2 along the frontage there on East Independence. The proposal would allow for all uses, uh, under prescribed conditions in N1B and N2B, as well as the CG zoning district. Uh, you can see also there's an illustration for the future Sardis Road and future Aracuipa Drive right-of-way. Uh, that's taken some coordination between the petitioner and, and NC DOT as well as CDOT. It does note the petitioner will work with both those entities on the location of the east-west connection through the site. Also notes the greenway easements would be conveyed, uh, prior to the issuance of the first building's certificate of occupancy. FEMA and community floodway areas would be dedicated and conveyed to Mecklenburg County Park and Rec. Uh, that would contribute to the Urbans Creek Greenway and multipurpose pathway. Uh, those dedicated areas would remain part of the open space and tree save calculations to maintain zoning compliance. Petitioner would also provide public access pedestrian connections to, uh, the Mecklenburg County Urbans Creek Greenway from some internal public streets east of Aracuipa, uh, road extension, uh, where that access would be appropriate based on topography, tree save at open areas. Uh, does propose a 20-foot vegetative setback along the northeastern property line. Uh, you can see that there, that line in green just to the, it's kind of southwest of Meadow Lane. That, uh, vegetative setback would include existing vegetation as well as supplemental plantings or a combination of both, uh, to help provide a separation between, uh, this project and the existing residential. Also illustrates a 50-foot, uh, stormwater management buffer and a 30-foot and 50-foot post-construction stormwater buffer, uh, on the site. Uh, those areas in red are the areas where the commercial zoning would, uh, be in place, uh, so those would line up with that future Sardis Road North connection, uh, which would be an appropriate place for, uh, potentially some commercial uses right there along East Independence, and then you would transition a little bit further into the site in N2, and then the back portion on the other side of that red line is primarily where, uh, the N1 portions would be up against the existing single-family lots. So, uh, just to give you a breakdown, uh, of where those differentiations are in zoning districts, uh, staff does recommend approval at this time upon resolution of outstanding issues related to environment and site and building design. Uh, there is consistency with Neighborhood 1. We do have some Neighborhood 2 as mentioned on the site, so that is, uh, somewhat consistent for that area as well, uh, but that commercial, um, change would be inconsistent, uh, with that overall recommendation for Neighborhood 1. But again, given that future extension of Sardis Road North, staff does feel those are, uh, generally appropriate locations for, uh, that type of change. So with that, we'll turn it over to the speakers, and we'll take questions you may have following the presentations. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members Colin Brown on behalf of the petitioner, Raven Partners. Ron Stewart with Raven Partners is, is here with me tonight. Uh, David, this is interesting rezoning. Um, so here we are, we're going out Independence towards the town of Matthews, and this property is literally on the border of Charlotte and Matthews. So if you see that red line, that is Charlotte city limit. Everything on this side is Matthews, everything on this side is, um, kind of on the Charlotte zoning side. So this is a large, um, property. There it is. This is the purple there, you can see Town of Matthews zoning jurisdiction, the white is this site, which is Charlotte zoning jurisdiction. I just find that interesting. Um, if you've, certainly everyone's driven Independence, uh, this is right across from Sardis, and, uh, of course, we've got the kind of Sardis, um, shopping centers on this side, and you may have wondered, wow, that's a big piece of property that is undeveloped in the city. Why is that? Um, so it is remarkable to see such a large piece that is, is undeveloped after all these years. Why is that? This is an area where NC DOT, and certainly we talk about transportation and concerns about why didn't every, anything ever get done? So this is a situation where NC DOT is coming with a pretty significant, uh, change to this area to bring some improvements. So that is, that is really kind of what has spawned this rezoning. So if you can kind of reorient yourself, the property I just showed you is here, where I'm circling, and what is happening is NC DOT is installing a new interchange at Sardis. So there will be a new interchange on and off of Independence here, and then as, um, as Dave mentioned, there's a, a road called Aracuipa up here, which I think is named after one of Charlotte's sister cities. The idea would be to extend that through our site, connecting to Sam Newell. So that would also provide some relief, you know, everyone doesn't just have to be on Independence, there would be a parallel connector. So all this is NC DOT, our, our team can't take credit for that. Uh, at the same time, Sardis would be extended across and through our site. So all of this is happening. With that happening, it kind of makes sense to look at what's going on on this property. And as you can imagine, with a new interchange and two new roads coming through it, it might not be the best site for low-density residential, which is why we're having, uh, the conversation about the zoning. So as Dave mentioned, the zoning today has an N2B, which allows, um, multifamily housing, and to the rear, we've got N1B, which is a little lower density. We're keeping a portion of both of those districts. Uh, so to follow, this would be our site now, and just show you, the white is essentially areas that would become right-of-way, so that, that piece would be eaten up by really a future interchange. The idea was, would be to place some commercial near it. Um, the orange, some of this is in place now, but it's extending that a little bit here. And then everything that is yellow, we are not changing the zoning on. It is zoned N1B today, and we are leaving it N1B, really to be sensitive to the neighbors. Uh, you will, you will hear from the neighbor shortly, but our, our plan was, hey, this is really changing things, um, and the resident you'll hear from, I believe, are from the town of Matthews. Uh, their development, it immediately is a much lower-density development with very large lots that have been there for a long, long time. Uh, and I'm sure, you know, as most neighbors would, would like to not see change. Uh, I don't think that Raven Partners is, is really the catalyst for this change. A new interchange and the new roads are really going to change this area, and so we're trying to bring zoning in line with that. We are, this, this frankly was probably a, a candidate for a conventional zoning. I think it makes sense to do it that way, uh, but with conversations we've had with the neighbors, we decided to move to a conditional zoning so we could be in a zoning environment so we could work with neighbors, get feedback, make some commitments. We're setting up to do that. Um, as, as Dave mentioned, and you'll hear from the neighbors in a moment, and we've met with them fairly extensively, uh, they've been to, uh, Northwood's office, I'm sorry, Raven Partners' office, uh, we've had a lot of conversations, so I, you may hear more from them, but I think we understand what their concerns are generally. And again, that is why we're not changing the zoning, um, in their backyards, literally. We do know that our ordinance, uh, now, in this N1B, allows you to do townhomes duplexes, doesn't require buffers, but with our conditional zoning, we're able to do that. Uh, so part of what, um, the Raven Partners teams has talked about, as, as Dave mentioned, is adding buffering, uh, a 20-foot, uh, landscape buffer at the rear of the site, uh, just to provide something in their backyards for protection. Uh, we have discussed, it's not currently in our zoning document, but we've discussed a commitment that we, as y'all probably heard, there's no zoning in Charlotte that is single-family only, but we said we would consider that as having only single-family homes, uh, in this portion of our property backing up to their single-family homes. And then because we are, again, in the conditional environment, we are able to make a pretty significant greenway dedication. Um, so there's a look there. I'll pause, I, I know the neighbors have a lot to say, so, um, I'll try to be as efficient as possible. We'll pause there, uh, and follow up after their comments.
All right. Mr. Shar, Sharka? Is he here? Thank you. And then he would be followed by Beth St. Martin, and we do have two podiums, so you can come down. And again, you have 10 minutes combined for all of you. Sherry Sigmund would be next. Gina Hoover, the next, and Michelle Braun. Gina Hoover, the next, and Michelle Braun, final. All right, we'll make sure everybody gets down the steps pretty easily. Please.
Thank you.
If you would pronounce your name for me, then I would be-
My name's Richard Skareka. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Committee for letting me speak. I moved into Lakeview Circle about three years ago, looking for a quiet neighborhood that was established for a very long time. Yes, we had quite a, quite a bit of woods and wildlife that are behind our property, including Irvine Creek, in addition to flood zone and wetlands that are back there. The proposed changes to the area has not been addressed for maintaining the habitat that's existing there, conditions that are going to go and also deal with the flood zone, and the proposed properties that are going to be against our, the back of our properties. That can, the buffer zone that they're providing us is only a 20-foot buffer zone, and having only 20 feet from there, which leaves new housing that's going to be really close to the back of our properties and houses. I would like to address that, you know, some of the habitat that's back there, there are, or actually are like multi-wildlife, a tree, deer and turkey. Occasionally, you'll end up seeing beavers back there through the streams. Other, other wildlife that you possibly do not see commonly, like a pleated woodpecker. It's actually North America's largest woodpecker. It's about like 16 to 19 inches tall. Based on some of the old trees in the tree line there, we have old sycamores and old black cherry trees that you don't see commonly through north residential areas anymore. This was established, this land was established back in the 60s, used to be older farmland that has grown into the habitat that it's, that it is today. We would like to go and request that we, we have a 100-foot buffer and maintain the wet flood zones and wetlands that are back there, not only along the stream, but also in the back of our properties. And, and to take into consideration for the buffer zone of environmental, preserving the green space and appeal, noise reduction of all these new housing and condensed housing that's going to be an N two, which is going to be still quite close to the back of our properties. That's also assisting with property value, stormwater management. There's effects on the wildlife, the habitat disruption, biodiversity. There's going to be the human wildlife conflict. There are coyotes and other wildlife that's back there that's going to get all pushed out of the area. Pollution and other, other things with flood zone risks and flood zone point management.
You, you have about six and a half minutes.
Dear Mayor Lyles and Council Members, I'm Beth St. Martin. I live at twenty-three thirty-three Lakeview Circle. And also I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge many of our other neighbors, if they'd like to stand or raise their hand, that have come to support us this evening as well. Tonight, I'd really like to share with you a little about our neighborhood and why we really are concerned about the proposed corporate rental homes abutting our properties. My husband and I have lived here for almost 32 years and raised our family here. We fell in love with this neighborhood, and during that time, we built relationships with our neighbors and have forged a deep sense of community. We all know and care for each other while sharing neighborhood block parties, ice cream socials, hayrides, and even door-to-door caroling. We are also always there for each other in times of need. However insular we may appear to be, we're also well aware of the growth of our Charlotte community as a whole and the need for additional housing. As Colin mentioned, we met a few times with Raven, the developers, and they shared that they were very community-minded as well and did not just build rental homes and leave the area. They stay and manage their rental homes and are a local company. And they care very much for the neighborhoods they build, and they care about the surrounding neighborhoods like ours. Tonight would really give them an opportunity to truly show the compassion for the surrounding neighborhoods like ours. I am here today to request really just simple additional buffer that they had shared with you, a lot more than 20 feet, if you think of 20 feet, between this new corporate rental neighborhood and our sweet, quiet, established neighborhood that we so know and love. Thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Sigmund?
Honorable Mayor Lyles and Mayor Potem Anderson, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Sherry Sigmund, and I've resided on Lakeview Circle in the past 32 years. The Raven Group sent a notification to our neighborhood in September, and this was not an early gift from Santa, I promise. They sent us this notification they would be building rentals behind our properties in the very near future. They said they would explain the project in a Zoom meeting later. In the meeting, we shared our concerns about the floodplain and wetlands that run behind us on the property. They showed us a picture of their rental property in Chapel Hill, but said they did not have an exact site plan for the project behind us yet. So we don't, we don't know what it looks like. You don't know what it looks like. When you examine the plan for the buffer, you will see that several houses, including mine, are right, we have but the Charlotte boundary line. We will have a separation of 40 feet, 40 feet. I can just about throw that far. Line to the development, from the back of my house to the development is 81 feet. Hopefully, you can understand our concerns about privacy, sound, and safety. I really had hope, I honestly did have hope, for our neighborhood meetings with the developers. Nice people, but nice in my house. I have to take care of myself too and my neighborhood. As it turns out, reasonable concessions were not granted. I was also surprised that the start date of 2024 would even be considered before the two-road Sardis Road Extension and Aracuipa Drive are in place. They're not on, they're not there yet. I know they said that they'll work with the Department of Transportation, but what does that mean? The entrance and exit to this new property would be onto Independence. And I've heard several of you say, we're crowded there anyway, and it would be a traffic nightmare pulling in and out of Independence Boulevard. And I thank you for listening.
Okay, we have about two minutes left. Gina Hoover and Michelle Braun, ladies and speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Lyles, Mayor Potem, and Council Members. My name is Gina Hoover. I am Mayor Potem for the town of Matthews. I am not here to speak for the town of Matthews or the board. I am here because constituents have reached out with their concerns. As a public servant, I want to speak of my concerns of this development, and I believe we have to look at the big picture of what is to come and what this development will bring. My concerns are, one, our schools are at their capacity. According to CMS, quote, "Existing school capacity in this area is currently inadequate", end quote. This past November, a $2.5 billion school bond was passed, but unfortunately, Crown Point, Mint Hill Middle, and Butler High School will not be receiving any of these funds. Our teachers have been pushed to the limit, and this is a burden they should not have to bear. We must ask ourselves, is this the educational experience we want for our children? Matthews currently has rezoning projects under construction and approved, which are still in the waiting process, and will be adding new students to these schools as well. Number two, along with the northeast section of parcel 19312102, Raven Partners is displaying 33 single-family dwellings. The residents of Matthews whose homes border this proposed new developments are only receiving a 20-foot vegetative, vegetative, I call it natural-
That's fine.
-setback, setback. In the U D O, two, two zero point one landscaping and screening purpose, section B, it states, quote, "Increase the compatibility of adjacent uses and minimize the potential negative impacts to neighboring uses," end quote. To put this in perspective, a garden hose is longer than this vegetative setback.
I am so sorry. I, I feel very awkward allowing you to continue to speak because I can't. And I want all of the Matthews voters to vote for us as well, so. But hearing that, we, this is the end of the 10 minutes. And so Mr. Brown has two minutes for a rebuttal. But what we, I would ask you to do is if you have written comments, you can please give those, well, I don't see our officer down here today, but if you would, if we could get, oh, there. If you would take those and give those to the officer, he will make sure the clerk includes them in our record.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. He has a two-minute rebuttal. Mr. Brown has two minutes rebuttal.
Thank you. Just in response, we've had, again, robust conversations with neighbors. I've done this a long time. This may be the longest-tenured group of residents that I've run into. You know, many of them 30-plus years. Were kind enough to come out. I, I do want to reiterate, you know, one of the things we tried to do and our thinking was, let's not rezone the property nearest to them. So, so that, as you can see, the yellow is we are just leaving, we are leaving the Charlotte zoning in place. And again, we've done, we've gone a step further to say, we'll leave, even though we're not changing that zoning, we'll condition it. We'll put in, and again, we're talking about a restriction to leave that single-family, a buffer, so that they know they've got some vegetative area. We're continuing our discussions with NC DOT. We'll be happy to continue discussions with you all and the neighbors as we move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, we, Ms. Malina?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank the residents from the town of Matthews for joining us here today. Thank you for taking your time to come to a Charlotte meeting and, and share your concerns. I know that I don't represent you directly, but I can absolutely tell you that I share the same joys of living right there on the border with you guys. The east side is one of the most, for me, beautiful places in our area, where you get to see some of the same things that you all mentioned. You know, the, the live, the animals, the, you know, the vegetation, all of the beautiful things that we enjoy every day. I see, and I'm, I'm very southern, sometimes I say critters. I see all kind of critters. I mean, I have seen families of deer in my backyard. I've seen rabbits, I've seen, you know, all of the things that you mentioned. So I know personally, from living on the east side for the last 14 years, that that's something that is, that me and my family, we've enjoyed immensely. So as a leader of that side, knowing that a lot of the people who are in the Charlotte limits enjoy some of the same things that you do in Matthews, I'm very diligent in the opportunity to speak up for some of that, because that's why a lot of us did move to the area. I'll, I'll preface my statement in saying that. I heard a lot. Mayor Potem Hoover, thank you so much for your level of specificity. I hope you did have some written comments, because I would really enjoy reading them for the purpose of moving forward and working with the development, going forward to see kind of how we can be good partners with Matthews, because I know this is not the beginning of the end. A lot of what we do, because we have our residents that we share, we have so many conversations to have going forward. And so I, I feel like this is a great opportunity for us to foster that relationship in a positive manner, to make sure that, you know, we receive your feedback, that I can read it, that I can share it with my colleagues here at the dais, because we do collectively make these decisions as well. Although I represent the residents on the east side, we collectively make these decisions, and I would be happy to make sure that I disseminate that information to my colleagues. I heard a lot of different concerns, and the most flagrant was the buffer. There is a lot of concern about a buffer for this residential property. So I'll, I'll definitely, that's going to be a first portion of my question for Colin. But I also heard some other things that I know that, that, that I actually would like to kind of ask a few of the residents if they don't mind, maybe even the Mayor Potem, if she doesn't mind returning to the podium, because I have a question for her specifically around some of the information that she was, she was giving with regards to the buffer specifically, so that I can better understand, to be able to communicate that information as well. So I'll start with a buffer question. And if you don't mind, Mayor Potem Hoover, you, you spoke specifically about some information with regards to a 20-foot natural setback and a buffer. Can you give me more information about what, I guess, what it, what do you feel would be a proper buffer, based on the information that you're giving? Because I didn't get to hear the whole of what you were going to say. And I know I can't, you know, give you a, a chance to say that, but if you can kind of round that out for me, so I can take some good notes, that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I've been out there, I have looked around, and 20-foot buffer is very inadequate. And all I have come to ask from this, from this board is, if it's possible, if we could at least add 15 more feet to make it a 35-foot buffer, that would be just so much improvement to help my constituents in, in this area. I mean, it's, it's not, I don't feel it's much more, but I understand it can affect things, you know, in different ways. So that was really all I was just going to ask for, was just 15 more feet if possible.
Okay. And, and stay right there, because one of the first things you said is, is something that we've, we've actually, in, in our most recent council meeting, we talked about the historic, you know, bond that we just passed, realizing that it won't meet all of the needs of our enormous school system. But you're, you're talking about schools in speci, so you're, you're, you're thinking that the Charlotte schools or the, the Charlotte property, the students would actually attend a Matthews school? Is that, is that what I'm?
According to the documents on your website, these are the schools these students will be attending.
Okay. So they would be attending the Matthews school? Okay. Yeah, but I, I'm just, I'm asking her to make sure. All right. And also, just to make sure I clarify, when you say a 35-foot buffer, natural, unnatural, what are you saying?
In Matthews, we call them natural buffers.
Okay.
And you guys, I'm assuming, call them vegetative buffers.
Yeah.
But that's what I know as a natural buffer.
Okay. Now, I also, there, there's some, so NC DOT, I drive by this every day, right? So NC DOT is going to drive now a road through this, this space, right? So I think the most responsible thing that we can do is kind of plan for that, whatever that may be. Because inevitably, that's going to drive more interest in development to, you know, your residents. And so I think the most important thing you have to do at this moment, knowing that that's coming inevitably, is arm your residents and make sure that they're ready for the fact that, you know, this inevitable change with transportation that's already planned and already coming is going to happen, so that they understand how they can best protect themselves. I'm happy to give you my card to make sure, you know, we can share notes even?
I would love that.
Okay. And I'll make sure I give it to you, so that, you know, they can be prepared for that, you know, going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that so much.
And so I also heard noise reduction, property value. I heard maintaining a stream. So there's a stream that backs up to the area?
Well, it's, there's actually like the floodplain, you know, that falls through there. And then it's hard for me to show you, but yeah, there is a stream that goes through. I know the property well, because I actually know the previous owner. And so I know that property well. And yes, there, it's, it's a, it's going to take some doing, you know, to do things around it. But yeah, there, there is, you've got the, is it the, I think it's the Ervin.
Okay, so Ervin, okay. Okay, it's Irvin, okay. All right. And I heard stormwater, that's something we're work in progress. Please be patient with us. Biodiversity pollution and flood zone management. So those are things that I could talk to staff about on our end. But I really, like I said, I really appreciate you coming to our meeting. I really appreciate all of the residents. My next question is definitely for Colin. I need some follow-up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So Colin, when you say right now, the entire property is actually zoned, the entire property right now is already zoned N one B?
The zoning, staff has the zoning map up. The portion closest to Independence is zoned N two B, which is our multifamily. The rear is zoned N one B.
Okay.
And the area closest to the neighbors, we are leaving N one B. So we're not changing the zoning in their backyards. We are in a, we did a conditional zoning so we could add some commitments, like providing a buffer which would not normally be required.
Okay. And are, are we, are we amicable to you and I and then we discuss more of the buffer?
Absolutely. Our, our engineer is here as well. So hearing all this and happy to, the neighbors know us well and know how to find us, so we're happy to continue the conversation.
Okay. And also, I know that we got some other things that are city-related, so this wouldn't be a question for you. So the type of, I guess, what, what type? They said corporate rental.
Well, and, and we wanted to be, you know, clear and honest with them. Northwood Raven on this site would have a mixture of housing types, right? They would have multifamily, closest to Independence. They would bring that back to have kind of duplex townhome types that would be for rent. And then along the rear, what they're contemplating is having single-family homes there. But Northwood Raven's model is to rent the homes. So these are, these are kind of very end, very high-end, single-family, go for more than most mortgages. But we wanted to be honest with them. That is the product type. If you looked at it, it would look like a single-family home, but their, their business model is to offer them for rent.
Okay, okay. And I, and I just, you know, I know you, you, you spend so much time with us that you're like family now. I mean, you, when you're here and you spend a lot of time with us. And, you know, being transparent, I, I do feel like we can reach something that, that makes sense for both parties. I, I don't feel like this would be a big hill to climb. I, I hope it wouldn't, but I don't know that until we start that conversation and start really ironing out what it is that the residents would need and how can we meet in the middle. And I'm happy to be a part of those meetings if you need me there. I, I would love to be there. I want to express that openly. But I, you know, I've known you to be a good partner, so I'm, I'm looking forward to it. You know, we can kind of do something one-off if you beat open to that and we, you know, pull in the residents and, and talk through it and see what's possible.
Happy to do it.
All right. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Esmer.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Some of my questions were already addressed by Councilmember Malina, so thank you. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hoover, for being here with the residents. That just shows how much you care. From the remarks from some of the neighbors, certainly sounds like a great community and great community of neighbors helping others. So that's great. I also appreciate some of the commitments that were made by the developer here, especially the buffer zone, connection to the greenway, and keeping especially the part of the rezoning, well, not part of the rezoning, but the area that's close to the residents' backyard as is, and not making any changes to that where you're doing N one B. So certainly appreciate that, but I'm sure there is a room for more. Was this petition submitted before the U D O?
I don't remember if it was submitted before, but it was submitted after any deadline to have a legacy district, which is why we have our U D O districts being requested on this one.
So U D O will apply under, under this? Okay.
U D O plus conditions.
Plus conditions. So that, that's good to hear. I know under the U D O, we have protection for heritage trees that we did not have before. And I think that's a bold step in the direction where we are trying to preserve and protect our heritage trees, our rich tree canopy. One of the speakers mentioned several trees. Would they, Mr. Petten, would that fall under heritage tree protection? And they would have to follow those heritage tree protections that are in place?
Yeah, any of the applicable tree protections for the U D O would apply to this site. I'm not sure which one specifically would apply until we got into more of a plants of middle and review of it. But any that would be in the, in the U D O now, if applicable, would fall under this petition.
Right, and I think that addresses concerns that were raised by one of the speakers. And we didn't have that before the U D O. And this is something new that this council had approved that I'm very proud of. I know that residents have requested 35 feet total, and you, the proposal has 20 feet. How do you feel about the additional request of 15 feet?
Like I said, our engineers here, we, we've looked at, you know, and we've kind of said to the neighbors, hey, we're going to go to the hearing and, because you never know what you get at a hearing. Sometimes you get other issues. So this helps us isolate the priorities, the feedback we have from you. We'll take that back to our design team and see if we can add some additional.
Okay. And there was a request by one of the speakers about traffic light off of Independence. I, I mean, as an east side resident, I, I can certainly understand that.
They're getting much more than traffic light.
Considering how busy Independence is, and especially with these improvements, if you can just give me, yeah.
If you'll put my, this, this won't be a traffic light on Independence. There's an interchange being built that will come through our site. So the new Sardis extension through our site, you'd be able to access. So, and there's, will also be a bridge across. So it's much more significant than a traffic signal.
Got it. So that would address the infrastructure request that was made by one of the speakers. So I think really the outstanding item here I see is the additional buffer and how far can we address that request? I think that would definitely, that would definitely make neighbors happy. I think.
I don't know if it would make them happy, but it, it may make them happier.
Yeah, I think it would. It, it, it would be a Christmas wish. So, there you go. But other than that, I don't have anything else. I would like to see you all having continued conversations and seeing how far we can address the buffer request that you all had made. But that's all I have. Certainly appreciate the requests and certainly appreciate the concessions that you have already, concessions that you already have made. I think these are very significant, and I certainly acknowledge and appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the transportation summary, and what we have are 10 trips per day current, 3,500 by Wright. And then, of course, no idea of what the proposed zoning would entail. Is there any way we can get a feel for that? I realize there's no site plan and so on, but I, I think jumping into the abyss in terms of what we could be generating here in terms of traffic is difficult. And I say that particularly because I see the active projects here, which I think are all publicly funded. Is that right? The active capital?
Everything I'm showing is N C D O T. There will be some cooperation between the development team and N C D O T.
Nonetheless, all of this is subject to this kind of bumpy process with the STIP and so on. The I-74 is a state road, right? So I'm, I'm wondering, I see, for example, start date year, late '24. I'd just like more information about the status of those and the, where they are in the STIP and when we think we're going to see completion of that. And if there is any way to indicate, compared to 3,500 units, the entitlement involves, are we talking, I assume, more? But is there any way to get our arms around what the trip generation is?
Not exactly. We could give some parameters. It, it's not as intense as you might imagine. So we, we could, we could give some rough parameters.
How do you know what I might imagine? I've got a very vivid imagination. Okay, I just posit the question. If you guys could follow up with me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. Any additional comments? If not?
Close. Yeah.
Excellent. All in favor of closing the hearing, the public hearing? Raise your hands. Those opposed? Okay, great. We're going to move on to agenda item number 34, petition number 2023-122 by Empire Communities. Approximately 9.24 acres located at the dead end of Jenkins Avenue and along the west side of Wright Avenue and District Five, Ms. Malina's district. The current zoning is N one dash A. Proposed zoning is N two dash A. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to the environment and site and building design. Well, first we'll hear from staff, and then we will have Mr. Brown, Mike Shea, and Eddie Moore, who are all speaking for this petition. They have 10 minutes in total. And then we will have Lori Stockdale, Nick McGlosky, Patrick Blazer, and Gary Lerner will have 10 minutes in combination against. Mr. Petten?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. 2023-122, it's about nine and a quarter acres. It is at the dead end of Jenkins Avenue, just to the west of Craig Ave, also at the cul-de-sac end of Bridle Path Lane. The existing zoning is N one A. You can see we've got some N two zoning really all around the site, north and east, as well as a little bit to the southeast, directly to the west. You've got the single-family neighborhood there on Bridle Path and Goshen and Linda Lane. The adopted place type generally reflects that zoning pattern of neighborhood one zoning, along with some of the neighborhood two that's existing in the area. The petition would propose up to 93 single-family attached residential units. Maximum building height would be capped at 48 feet. Also proposes an internal network of public streets with sidewalks and alleys connecting to the north as well as to Wright Avenue. There is an eight-foot path that's proposed between Linda Lane to the proposed development. I believe that is Bridle Path, not Linda Lane, so apologize for that. Also specifies improving Wright Avenue as a local residential wide, identifies McMullen Creek Tributary and a 35-foot stream buffer along that creek. Also illustrates a 25-foot Class B landscape yard along portions of the west and south property lines, and also notes that development within that swim and P C S O buffer would be coordinated and subject to approval by Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater and mitigated if required by city ordinance. Staff is recommending approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to environment, transportation, and site and building design. It is inconsistent with the policy map recommendation, but we do have a pretty strong prevalence of neighborhood two to the east of this. And given this project does kind of stop too close and doesn't come just adjacent to some of those single-family, do felt like, or did feel like it was a nice, reasonable transition from some of the multifamily off of Wright Ave and Jenkins, and as well as to the north where this project would basically have a, a road connection and be an extension of the project that's currently underway to the north of this site. Felt like it was an appropriate location for an increase in, in some of the density here. Again, we are recommending approval so long as those issues get resolved. And we will turn it over to the speakers and take any questions following the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petten. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmembers, Colin Brown on behalf of the petitioner, Empire Homes. Joining from Empire is Mike Shea and Dan Robertson. As Dave mentioned, pretty interesting infill site here in the Cotswold vicinity and near the Monroe Road corridor. There's a high-level photo as you come in and take a closer look at it. Eight and a half acres, so that's a good infill site with an opportunity for some good housing in, in a very desirable location. What is interesting about this site is Empire also owns the property to the north of this. And I say that to point out, the property to the north is, is, is zoned N two. It would be, today you could develop apartments or multifamily, but Empire would like to develop these together consistently with a, you know, a for-sale townhome product. So we are rezoning the southern portion. The northern portion can allow town, so we're approaching it that way. We have also put this into a conditional zoning. Again, this is, you know, an area where we knew we would have feedback from the community and wanted to be a conditional zoning environment so we could discuss and make commitments on issues of concern. As Dave mentioned, and this is a good illustration, everything in orange is zoned N two B, so that's higher density, you know, kind of multifamily. Over here, we've got traditional lower density, and this would be a nice buffer of kind of medium-density housing between those two types. This is a look at our conditional zoning plan now. As I mentioned, the parcel to the north, which is owned by Empire, is zoned N two B. You could do much higher density, but we're not looking to do that. Looking to have kind of a compatible townhome development. I'll let the adjoining speakers speak for themselves, but we've got some continuing themes tonight. You'll hear about stormwater, and that is something that we are mindful of. One of the things that we're, you, you try to balance connectivity, transportation, a lot of things. So the other, so we'll, we'll hear about stormwater. The other item is Bridle Path currently has a cul-de-sac here. Typically, C dot would ask us to put a street connection through. We're showing a PED connection. In light of all the discussions we've had about stormwater, I think our preference would be to eliminate this connection so that we can leave that area as open as possible. I think staff has indicated they might be comfortable with that. So that's an item you'll hear from the neighbors about, that we're certainly willing to do that. We think that could not only address their concern, but also help with a little bit of the stormwater concern. So I'll, I'll let the neighbor speak, and then I will follow up with feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, so Lori Stockdale, Nick McGlosky, Patrick Blazer, and Gary Lerner, you have 10 minutes in combination.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Lori Stockdale, and I live adjacent to the parcel that is up for rezoning. I've lived there for 12 years. Also with me are Nick McGlosky and Patrick Blazer. We are doing a joint presentation for you. On this slide, you'll see our homes marked by the red Xs. So that is our location next to these and our interests in the concerns of the development. We have held community discussions with our neighbors, some of whom are here tonight. We've also met with city staff, including Stormwater, regarding our concerns and greatly appreciate their expertise and responsiveness. We also met with the developer and their representatives to address our primary concerns, which do fall under stormwater and an access path to Bridle Path. Foremost, our concerns are around stormwater. You'll see some of these photos that will be demonstrated and explained forthcoming. This is nine acres of undeveloped natural area. It flows into a tributary that services McMullen Creek, McAlpine Creek. The localized flooding already overwhelms the creek. This is a significant safety issue for the approximately 20 children who live along the road next to the creek. Any increase in stormwater runoff from this project could have catastrophic impacts to our neighbors. Along the creek, you'll see in a few slides, again, further downstream, there have been pieces of the parcels that have been part of the floodgate buyout program. This is upstream from there, so you will be able to see that. But really, it is imperative that our neighborhood not be subject to further physical or financial impacts of flooding exacerbated by this or any other project. But for a firsthand account of the flooding, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Blazer. Do you want me to drive?
Sure. Thanks. Good evening, and thank you all for, for your time this evening, councilmembers and Mayor Pro Tem. I am Patrick Blazer, and I live at 4315 Emery Lane, which you're looking at right now. As you can see, on the left, we're having a pretty good day. On the right, we're having a pretty terrible day. And as Lori mentioned, we have a lot of children that live along this street and certainly call these backyards their home. You can advance the slide. This is looking south from my neighbor's backyard towards our homes. And you can see where the flooding kind of begins, where these tributaries come together. And then, of course, it continues to grow as we move down the line. Next slide. And then we're going to play you a short video here of what that looks like, as I mentioned, on a bad day.
Emma had indicated it would.
Play. I can speak to it if it doesn't.
Am I, is it able to play?
There we go. So this is not slow-moving water. This is not an inch and a half of water, right? This is as much as two feet of moving water outside of the creek behind our homes. That fence, as you can see, there's roughly three feet, three and a half feet high at the top. So that lower railing gives you a sense of just how deep that is, and you can see how it's already encroaching on our homes and going into our crawl spaces at times. It's my understanding that six inches of water, right, has the ability to knock somebody over. 12 inches of water will move a vehicle. We have as much as a foot and a half of water flowing through our backyards. And this doesn't happen once every two or three years. This may happen as many as three or four times a summer, okay? So these are massive amounts of water. And we think, as Lori said, anything beyond this really becomes catastrophic. Along this creek bed, you'll also find power lines as well. Our power lines in this neighborhood are above ground. I have watched the erosion encroach on these power lines, and I have seen trees fall on these power lines due to the erosion along the creek bed. When we moved there eight years ago, I could have stood in the creek and I could have seen out of the creek, right? So call it roughly six feet high. That's me being a little generous to my house. That said, I can't stand in that creek any longer and see out of it. This is a massive amount of water that's encroaching on our homes. We can't afford to add any more volume to that without, again, it becoming very catastrophic. So for us, it's a lot of things, but safety, as you can tell, is foremost on our minds as it comes to this water, and of course, property values as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Nick.
Okay, council members, Mayor Protem. So I live on 964, my name's Nick McGlosky. I live on 964 Bridle Path Lane, which is the property just right next to where the site's proposing being developed. And there is a pedestrian path that's being proposed on the site plan that would come right through and land on our cul-de-sac. It just seems very illogical considering there's no sidewalks on our street. It's poor lighting. The street has not been paved in over 20 years. And the street is really narrow. It's at 21 to 23 feet wide versus some other streets in the neighborhood that are much wider. You can see from the topography, which I'll show on the next slide, when you, the topography literally slopes down like this. So you would have to have some sort of steps or something that would drastically come up the hill, which would not be safe if anyone was up there. There's a lot of cars that are turning around the cul-de-sac. And so you would, there's, seemingly, it would be very difficult to be ADA compliant to build a public path that would go up such a steep hill. That red square is me standing at the top, and my wife's at the bottom of the creek taking a picture. So it is a very steep drop-off from the cul-de-sac that would go down, and it just doesn't seem very intuitive that you would want a public path to go up there. You know, additionally, there's really no stores or shops or restaurants. It's a 27-minute one-way walk from my house to any nearby stores, coffee shops, or anything like that. So it doesn't really seem that it would be providing any connection, if you will, to anywhere. There is Randolph Middle School, which is a half-mile from the proposed site, but it's an IB school, so the residents of this proposed zoning would not even be zoned for that school. They would be zoned for AG Middle School. And lastly, you know, there is significant water runoff, as Lori and Patrick had talked about, coming down the street from Bridle Path. Again, that's my house. Again, my wife's standing at the bottom, taking a picture of me up top. Significant water runoff coming down Bridle Path, down that slope that feeds into the creek. So if you were to remove those trees for a public path that seemingly really wouldn't add any sort of benefit, it would, it just would not make much sense and negatively affect the vegetation and the stormwater, which Colin alluded to, which would be, hopefully, you know, they're accepting, they're accepting to kind of remove that. So, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
You have about two and a half minutes.
I'm Gary Lerner with Lerner Residential. Lerner Residential and its principals have managed Delane Glen Apartments for over 30 years. 60-unit apartment community was built in the late 1960s. It is naturally occurring, affordable work for housing with rents starting below $1,000. Delane Glen is located off of Craig Avenue. And the sole access for 22 of our apartments to Craig Avenue is Jenkins Avenue. Jenkins Avenue is on a public right-of-way that is currently maintained by Delane Glen Apartments and not the City of Charlotte. We are opposed to the rezoning in its current form since it would permit the developer of the 93 proposed townhomes to use Jenkins Avenue. The road which our small apartment community maintains is one of the two primary access roads to their community without improving Jenkins Avenue's to city standards or dedicating it, or having it dedicated to the city for maintenance. Staff analysis recommends improving Jenkins Avenue to public street standards so that it can be publicly maintained. We ask that city council make this a condition of the proposed zoning. If the road is, if the road is publicly maintained, we will support the rezoning petition. Goal 3 of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, Housing Access for All, has a stated objective. Retain the number of naturally occurring affordable and workforce housing units in the community by managing change within the existing neighborhood. If the city council is going to permit change to the neighborhood surrounding Delane Glen Apartments by allowing the construction of 93 additional homes, it must do so in a way that won't place an additional burden on Delane Glen Apartments, an affordable housing community that is located within the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lerner, and all. Mr. Brown, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. And again, we've had, I think, good communication with these residents indicating. So I'll kind of move through those comments. One, the connection to Bridle Path, we would, if staff is comfortable, we'd be okay removing that. We think it addresses the stormwater issue as well. Mr. Lerner was referencing over here Jenkins, which is off our site, which the city has asked us to connect to. He's right. It's a public right-of-way, but the city doesn't maintain it. So his point is, I don't want you putting all these cars on my street if I got to pay for the street. So we're working with CDOT, and our team is willing to make improvements. CDOT would have to look at the street and make sure they'd be okay accepting it for maintenance. CDOT has indicated to me that they've already put that on the list to go out and look at. So happy to address that. The last one is stormwater. And the Empire team has looked at this and certainly share similar concerns and have indicated we are willing to go above and beyond the requirements of the stormwater ordinance. We would like to continue working with Stormwater Services, really to make sure we're doing the best bang for the buck. Is it that we upsize our system larger? Or is it that we commit some funds to some things further downstream? So again, I think this can be a win-win-win, you know. And I hate to say that, but, you know, if someone can develop this today, it will get developed. I think we've got a good plan. I think we've got solutions to these. And we'd like to continue working with Stormwater Services. It's got to be something financially feasible for our team, but we want it to have the most effect. So happy to continue on those. And again, Bridle Path, we're happy dealing with. We're talking about the improvements to Jenkins, and CDOT would have to confirm if they'd accept it. But happy to work on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Molina? Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, I, again, would like to thank the residents for coming out. I'm always happy to see our residents involve yourselves in the process. It's important that we hear from you. I want to acknowledge that video. Oh, my goodness. It is breathtaking to realize that you're going through that. And I know that with that being seen by myself and my colleagues, I think we have to have some additional conversations to make sure that we're doing right by you and the residents that are in that area. So I apologize. That's a lot. That's a whole lot. And so I'm confident, though, because I have already spoken to the intended developer, and I've spoken to Colin. And I'm encouraged by some of what I'm hearing to provide relief, you know, with this actually being a petition that could possibly move forward. Again, you know, I understand that you may understand where you are in the process. So this is not like yes or no. This is really where we kind of understand the full scope of what we're looking at. We involve what you would like to see happen into this process so that we can try to reach that good place where everyone's, you know, able to move forward and be happy. And so I heard a lot from you. And I'm encouraged to hear, you know, Colin mentioned that CDOT would address one of the concerns about making it a condition of the proposed zoning to have the road that you mentioned to be city-maintained, because right now, that's not something that's currently happening. And to hear that CDOT is already taking the measure to look at, to see if that's something that we could do to move forward. I think I'm happy to hear that. And to hear the actual petitioner be interested in the stormwater piece. I spoke to Colin at length, actually, I spoke to the petitioners a little bit at length about this. I think moving forward as we, as we go into some of these petitions, we have to make sure that we're being as responsible as possible, right? And I think all parties, Charlotte is something that we have to protect. We have something beautiful here. We have something that, you know, we have a city that, you know, my colleague Malcolm Graham would say, if you're not growing, you're dying, you know. And to be on the growing end of things is the best place to be, but then we have to manage it responsibly. So when we have, you know, the development that's coming, the people that are coming, that's an inevitable truth to have that partnership where they're willing to be malleable and even go above and beyond, that's encouraging for me to hear. I know that we still have work to do, especially in the way of stormwater. I just can't get that out of my brain right now. I want to know more, though. I have a question in particular about the picture of the pedestrian path that's at the end of the cul-de-sac. I need a little bit more gravity. So this is something, maybe you can give me that, and then I can maybe ask the neighbors. So can you give me a little bit more about the scope of that?
If you can see the screen here, Bridle Path ends in a cul-de-sac. Typically, when a property, and this property is being developed, typically, when we bought a cul-de-sac for connectivity reasons, the city would typically want us to build a street to connect through.
Okay.
We, in our initial filing, did not include a street. We included a pedestrian path.
Okay.
The more that we've looked at it, and especially the more we've talked about stormwater, the kind of stormwater flows this direction, it occurs to us that probably the best thing we can do is stay away from that and leave that open. And so Mr. McGlosky, you know, has pointed out, he was standing at the top of the hill, looking down the hill. And, you know, his point is, you know, to install a pedestrian path there, you'd have to do a lot of grading and tree removal. We'd also have to have a crossing. So our, we would support removing that. We'll still have connectivity to the north. We'll still have, hopefully, connectivity to Jenkins, which may be a public street. So the site would still have, and, sorry, to the north, you would still be able to connect over to Goshen. So we think connectivity would be maintained to benefit the site not to have that connection.
And David, would that be a possibility? Like, how would that affect this particular petition?
I think it's certainly a possibility. We have to just check in with our subdivision folks where that requirement comes from. We do have other connectivity to the north, which will eventually get us out to some existing network streets in the general area. So, you know, that connectivity was offered as kind of a, instead of a road, can we potentially have a pedestrian path? I don't think we looked at all the potential challenges with grade and all of that. So on paper, it's an idea that works and meets an ordinance requirement, but as it comes down to applicability, there's a lot of challenges with it. So I think if we're weighing out the benefit of removing that to ensure a little bit better chance to handle stormwater runoff and lessen the impacts, then I think that's certainly a conversation that we'd be generally supportive of.
And then I also heard, so right now, there was, there's a 27-minute one-way walk to any, what's surrounding this? Is there anything in particular that's surrounding this particular?
I don't want to. No, I mean, other than nearby school, there's, you know, businesses over onto Monroe, which isn't, you know, the easiest necessarily walk. And the Bridle Path connection really wouldn't serve a benefit. Again, that pedestrian connection was more to try to satisfy the intent of the ordinance on providing connectivity where existing streets dead-end or provide a cul-de-sac adjacent to a project. But as far as where does it connect to, there's probably not as many uses that would be a walk from this site, but it would just provide a pedestrian connection. So if folks wanted to get out and walk through the neighborhood, go to, you know, walk to the school or walk to some other spots, they potentially could. But again, it's not a high-impact pedestrian connection if we're going to categorize it in some way.
That map helps me. Is there, is there like a future intended use for this space? Like, is this something that's going to eventually be something different at some point?
No, there's not a greenway plan or anything that's planned to go through the area that I'm aware of. It was just, again, an offer to try to meet the subdivision ordinance intent by providing connection through a different means.
Okay. I'm interested in continuing, being a part of the future discussions. Like I said, we talk to this guy a lot. So I feel confident that if there is a path forward where we can resolve many of these issues, you know, I'm there to be a conduit. I'm there to help raise your concerns, you know. And they've been pretty good partners. So, you know, if there's a way forward, I feel like we can try to reach that and work with staff to find out. So I want to give you that assurance as the person representing you in East Charlotte to tell you that, you know, I'm happy to come to the meetings if you. Inevitably, it sounds like we will have a few more. So please consider me open to be a part of that. Thank you for coming today.
That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs.
So I'd like to incorporate by reference my earlier remarks about stormwater. I think what's alarming here is to see that torrent. And it might be a good opportunity to clarify, everybody pays in their water bill for stormwater services, and there is a certain definition of what the city does for that. And then there's another process through which application can be made for some remedial intervention. And those are reviewed, and they're classified according to certain parameters as top priority As and Bs and Cs. And in some cases, water, for example, it doesn't reach a home in a private area, and it's not a public road, doesn't qualify. So I wonder, in this context, if it might be helpful, could we just get a memo reminding us of, you know, probably a clone from the website, but just get a memo reminding us of what the basic obligation of stormwater is and then what the status is of this location in terms of potentially being scheduled for an intervention? Or what sometimes happens that causes this thing is there are blockages, and there's a need to kind of address a culvert that isn't flowing properly. Maybe it's something like that. But I do think if Stormwater Services could clarify for us why the current situation exists, it would certainly be also important for us to make sure that it doesn't get worse.
Sure, and we can, we can follow up with that information just to give you some additional context. Stormwater, when they reviewed the plans, did suggest that they, a note be added that the petitioner would agree to provide 100-year stormwater P control or provide a downstream analysis. And another advisory note, they suggest it would be when the construction plans would get submitted for land development review should the rezoning be approved. A 100-plus-one stormwater protection analysis, basically a flood study, would be required for all the streetens and creeks on-site. And it would also need to be shown that the development will create no adverse impacts to adjacent properties on the other side of the creek. So that's something that was in advisory notes, basically saying, if this rezoning gets approved here, the things that we're going to be looking for in permitting. So there's a couple of things that they added or requested or advised the petitioner on that, you know, we'll continue to work with them on to see if we can get those included in the conditions.
So my point, though, is what possible obligation could there be on the city to help out with this? And again, maybe not. It's complicated, right? In terms of what your taxes actually pay for. But we need to be very clear that we are fulfilling our commitment to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esmer.
Thank you. This is a challenging site, especially from the video I saw. I have concerns. I cannot support this in its current form. And this is, I rarely say this, but in this case, definitely, I can't support it as is. I think neighbors have valid concerns. And to Mr. Driggs' point, we need to be looking at our liability. Are we potentially increasing our liability? I mean, we just had a billion dollars in, a couple of years ago, when Mr. Driggs and I started on the Budget and Governance Committee, and we looked at our stormwater request. And we had a billion-dollar in stormwater requests, and... requests. And I, I think we have to be very mindful about looking at this petition and, and trying to approve it and potentially, um, adding more to our waiting list. So I, I cannot support it and I will also ask my colleagues to carefully take a look at this and potentially denying it if there are no significant changes being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Would close.
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your hands. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to agenda item number 35, petition number 2023-141 by Fifth Third Bank. A, a location approximately at .434 acres located along the east side of Beatty's Ford Road, south of Holly Street and north of Weber Avenue and District Two, Mr. Graham's district. Current zoning is NC, proposed zoning is CGCD. Staff recommends the approval of this petition upon solution of outstanding issues related to the site. First, we will hear from staff and then we will hear from Mr. Brown and Deanne Leonard. Um, and there are no, uh, voices against this petition. So Mr. Brown and Ms. Leonard will have three minutes in aggregate. Mr. Petten?
Thank you. Uh, 2023-141, uh, it's just a little shy of a half acre on Beatty's Ford Road, uh, south of Holly Street, north of Dr. Weber Avenue. Uh, it's currently zoned NC. Uh, the request of zoning is to go to our commercial, general commercial district or CG district with conditions. Uh, the adopted place type is to maintain that neighborhood center, uh, place type, uh, that is supported here by the, the actual zoning district. We'll get into a little bit of that here in just a moment. So, uh, the conditions that are being proposed for this project are really just twofold. Uh, we've got all uses permitted by right and under prescribed conditions. And then because this is for a potential drive-through, a location, drive-throughs, as a lot of us are aware, are not, uh, really allowed in our activity center districts. Uh, they're allowed under certain conditions if the drive-through was existing prior to, uh, the implementation of the effective date of the UDO on June 1st. Uh, and if they are reconstructed on a site, uh, they have to adhere to certain design guidelines, which is the second bullet that we see essentially stating that the drive-through lanes would not be placed between the building, uh, and Beatty's Ford Road. Everything would be either off to the side or to the rear. So essentially, while the CG district isn't compatible or consistent with that neighborhood center place type, uh, we have asked the petitioner to at least design the use, uh, i- it basically in the same fashion that you would, uh, if there was an existing drive-through and they were tearing it down and putting up a new one. Uh, and the reason being for that is, uh, as we had mentioned, this is along Beatty's Ford Road. This is a corridor of opportunity, uh, as part of the city's corridors of opportunity program. Uh, so there are several other policies that we are, are looking at to, uh, have staff support for this petition. We do have one outstanding issue related to site design we need to work through. Uh, but outside of just the policy map showing this is neighborhood center and that commercial district not necessarily, uh, aligning with that, uh, the prescribed conditions that they're agreeing to, uh, have that to at least be designed as if it were, uh, in an activity center, and also the multiple, uh, provisions that we pulled from some of the corridors of opportunities work, uh, over the last three years or so, certainly support, uh, this type of use along this corridor. So we feel like we've kind of taken the policies and the, the goals of the corridors of opportunity program with the design standards of the neighborhood center, kind of blended them together to get the outcome that we're, we're looking for to support this petition. Uh, so that is why staff, again, is supportive of it. Uh, we do have just an outstanding issue to work through, but overall, uh, we don't have any significant concerns while it is inconsistent with the policy map. Uh, because of those items we just discussed about the quarters of opportunity program, we, we are comfortable, uh, providing our support for this petition. So with that, I'll turn it over to the petitioner and take any questions after their presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mayor Protim, council members, Colin Brown on behalf of the petitioner, Fifth Third, Deanne Leonard from Fifth Third is with us tonight. Uh, happy to report, uh, the neighborhood's excited about this petition. Uh, if you see, we had a large turnout at the community meeting. Uh, Councilmember Mitchell was able to join that. Background on this is, is Fifth Third has been working in the community for, for over a year on this project. They've got good support from the community. It's something, uh, that folks want to see in their neighborhood. The problem happened was this was allowed prior to June 1. On June 1's, when the district changed, they got kind of locked out. Uh, so we're, we're in the rezoning process to allow this to happen. We've added, we did make this conditional, um, so that we could, we could include the design guideline, uh, that Dave mentioned. But again, happy to, uh, happy to report this had, uh, broad support from the community. There was a nice article in, uh, QC Metro Today, uh, talking about the neighborhood and, and that's really credit to Fifth Third and their team, uh, working closely with the neighbors. Uh, they have made some improvements that are not part of our zoning for, uh, use of 70% of minority contractors when this building is constructed. And, and I know we've, we've, we've talked about drive-throughs, uh, we've talked about concerns when they're related to fast food, but this is a financial institution. It is important, uh, to folks in the community that they have that for safety and security. Uh, and I think what Fifth Third has done with their design, as Dave mentioned, is mitigating those concerns. There's nothing between the building and the street, so it's got a nice appearance and will be a good presence in the community. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments?
Would close.
You have a motion to close in second. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you. I, I'm sorry it's slow in the draw. I, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Fifth Third for your patience, for working with us and being committed to the corridor. I want to say thank you to staff because when this was brought to staff, you quickly got to the point of how do we find a solution? And colleagues, I would tell you, there are support letters Colin mentioned from Dalebrook Neighborhood Association that I just handed out. Uh, looking forward to the vote in January, but really appreciate your commitment and being in the corridor. And I think this would be bank number three, uh, at the TD Bank, JP Morgan Chase, and now Fifth Third. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. We have a motion and a second. All in favor to close the public hearing, raise your hands. Any opposed? Okay, so we move on to agenda item number 36, petition number 2020-071 by 3G Investments and Development LLC. Approximately .79 acres located along the east side of Park Road, the south side of Selwyn Ave, and north of Manning Drive in District Six, Mr. Precaris' district. The current zoning is N1-A, proposed zoning is MUD-O. Staff does not recommend approval of this petition in its current, in its current form. We will hear from Mr. Petten, and after we hear from Mr. Petten, we do not, we have, um, Mr. Ferguson, Russell Ferguson, Sam Nicholson, Dan Morrison, and Michael Gaze, who are speaking for this petition, and Steve Christian will speak against. And all of the, all four who are for it will have 10 minutes in aggregate. And Mr. Christian?
Propo- or the, excuse me, the zoning currently, N1A, uh, proposed zoning, this is a 2020 petition, so certainly came in before our filing deadline earlier this year. So it's a, a mud optional, uh, petition. Adopted place type, as we can see, we've got, uh, Neighborhood One for the majority of this side of Park and Selwyn Community Activity Center, uh, just on the other side of Park that really extends all the way up, uh, upwards towards Park Road Shopping Center. Uh, the proposal is to allow adaptive reuse of the existing two-story, single-family residential structure, uh, permit, uh, uses within the mud zoning district, uh, would limit, uh, the use of the outdoor patio between the building and adjacent single-family home, uh, to the hours of eight and 10. Limit use of all outdoor areas to the hours of eight and 10 on Sunday through Thursday and then eight to 11 on Friday and Saturday, and days preceding federal holidays. Uh, an allowance of up to 3,000 square feet of an additional building expansion. That would be at the rear of the building. You can see that, uh, in the shaded pink area. Uh, would limit the height of any additional expansion, uh, to 40 feet, which is consistent with our residential zoning, uh, heights. Uh, maintains the existing structure and paved parking as they are. Uh, would also maintain and expand the existing patio, uh, at the front side of the structure. Uh, would provide a 30-foot easement to Mecklenburg County for the future Briar Creek Greenway. Uh, expand the sidewalk along Park Road to eight feet. Uh, and also request some optional provisions, which would essentially to reduce parking requirements by 25%. That would allow to, um, have better preservation of the existing building. Uh, allow for the existing parking to remain and screened with a wall at least four feet tall. Uh, allow existing streetscape along Selwyn Avenue to remain, uh, and allow existing, uh, streetscape along Park Road, except the sidewalk would be extended to a width of eight feet where feasible. Uh, and then exemption from the finstration requirements of Section 12.544 of the ordinance. Uh, that would help, again, to facilitate the reuse and rehabilitation of the existing building. And then any expansions, uh, would meet the requirements, uh, and not have that fenestration reduced. Uh, as mentioned, staff does not recommend approval of the petition in its current form. Just have some outstanding items, uh, that we still need to work for and get clarification on, things like allowing, uh, limiting allowed land uses, uh, clarifying or better, uh, defining the hours of operation and, and potentially changing those in certain instances, uh, clarifications on some site design, transportation and streetscape improvements, and then the park and rec easement request. Uh, it is inconsistent with the policy map recommendation for Neighborhood One. Uh, and at this time, we'll turn it over to, uh, the folks speaking and we'll take any questions following their presentations. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protim, Council, uh, Russell Ferguson. I'm here speaking on behalf of the petitioner. I'm joined by a representative of the petitioner who's also a neighbor, I think, uh, less than 10 houses down the street. Uh, I'll be the only speaker. We had some time conflicts and it just, so we, we do have a lot of supportive neighbors on this. Um, and I thank staff for continuing to work with us. There is a path to get to staff supporting this. Uh, it's a path many of you are familiar with for adaptive reuse projects, and it's definitely my fault, not theirs, to get there, uh, before this hearing. Um, but I, but I do think we're, we're very close to doing that in the next revision. Uh, I'm proud to stand here before you tonight with a rezoning petition to preserve a building, uh, which I have said before, and I say again, it's nice every time to stand here and talk about reusing an existing structure. Um, so, you know, the preservation of this existing building really requires it to be allowed to adapt to its environment. This is the corner of Park Road and Selwyn Avenue. It has around 30,000 car trips a day, uh, going by it. It is, it is very high-traffic scene. Uh, many of those in the audience may remember this being a seamstress, uh, business. It has long been a commercial use and a residential use. Uh, it continues at this day to be used as both an office and a residential rental, um, rental residence. I think what we, uh, proposing isn't really revelationary, and I think that we'll get there. And I think there are a couple of examples from last year would be Local Loaf in Noda, uh, would also be Culture Shop in, in the Belmont neighborhood, where very similar structures we're able to find a way for. While staff is not supporting it, I wanted to point out that we are meeting a large number, uh, five of the comprehensive goal plans and, and that it fits into the context of the area. Uh, this parcel is wedged between two greenway projects, one which is complete, one which we are dedicating 30 feet to, uh, to help complete, uh, with the Briar Creek Greenway project. Uh, and then as you can see on the right, that you're looking at massive development coming out Park Road. Uh, even across the street from the site is actually the entrance to the greenway. While it's listed as N1, it's actually a, a wide-open sidewalk. Uh, the principal purpose of this is, first off, is to clarify some existing issues of the legal non-conforming uses that are in the building as we speak, uh, to allow it to continue to exist as residential and office use. Hence the 2040, uh, 2020, uh, stamp on this rezoning. Uh, this rezoning does not have a plan to move forward, uh, towards any development at this time, uh, but it's needed to clarify that so that it can move forward into the new world of the UDO. Um, it allows, it also allows, because we're going through this process, it allows it to adapt to allow additional uses within the scope of that existing building with some reasonable expansion to allow it to change over to commercial. Uh, just to get a better idea of the context, that tall map in the middle, uh, I think it's just appropriated in context with the existing apartments directly to the north, uh, which you can see directly from the site because that is cleared out. You have grocery across the store, retail, coffee, restaurants, bars, and lot, and lots and lots of cars. Uh, you can see some close-ups. Uh, that's a picture at like 4:30 on a regular afternoon, uh, looking out. There is a bus stop directly adjacent to this property. Uh, as I mentioned, the greenway entrance across the street. And any future for this business as a commercial use would be bound to a pedestrian-focused business because of its lack of parking and accessibility. And I just want to kind of emphasize this. I do this in all the adaptive reuse projects. We do think this, with the restrictions that are in place on the conditional rezoning, are going to make this reasonable in the context of the area. It is next to a single-family home, and those concerns are real and valid, and we represent, we recognize those, and we're trying to work to get there. Uh, little close-up on the site plan. The idea would be to get the patio towards Park Road, if possible. It is just a very narrow site with the right-of-way. Uh, there are a number of limitations on the rezoning plan and more that we will be adding to limit the hours of operation, certain types of use, uh, add more vegetative buffers, uh, clo- including closing any operations on the side of the property-facing residential properties. Uh, these are the hours that we have in it right now, which have differentiation between the side that is adjacent to single-family, which has an existing patio, which is kind of a beautiful brickwork patio, uh, and, and then for the other side of the patio. A little context, we're still working with CDOT on this, one of the outstanding issues. Uh, notice the bump out and, and the drainage to the stormwater. These have been a little bit challenging to work forward towards. And recently, these are actually slightly older pictures. These, these sites have changed and been repaved in roughly the same exact manner by the City of Charlotte, which just did, redid the corner exactly like that. And you can see it right here. Uh, there's an example of the pedestrian nature of the environment with the little guy on the bike. I thought it was pretty cool to see him riding through there. Uh, when we go down Park Road, we're looking at expansion to full eight-foot sidewalks. There is a major topographical, uh, challenge as, as the slope goes down to Briar Creek and, and the sidewalk stays even with the bridge that's right there. Um, I think we'll just pause there and, and hear from the other speakers and, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fer- Ferguson. Steve Christian? As you come down, uh, Mr. Christian, you have 10 minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak. My name is Steve Christian. My family and I reside in the property adjacent to the one under consideration. My family household includes my, the love of my life and the mother of my three sons, my oldest, who is four years old, and my two twin sons, who are two years old. My journey has taken me across the world while serving in the US Navy as an IT radio man for SEAL Team Eight. In my quest for a home, I deliberately chose Charlotte and this specific property as the place to anchor my roots and build my family. Today, I bring forth my concerns and perspectives as someone deeply invested in the well-being of this community. To me, the proposed rezoning of this property transcends mere zoning considerations. It fundamentally pertains to the well-being and quality of life for residents in close proximity to the property in question. It underscores the importance of preserving the character, values, and essence of our residential neighborhood. Presently, 3G Investments and Developments LLC, or one of its owners, have purchased five out of the seven properties extending from 3915 Selwyn Avenue to the specific property under consideration, 3941 Selwyn Avenue. The latest addition to their portfolio, 3929 Selwyn Avenue, sale was just finalized last week on December 13th. This acquisition strategically surrounds my family's home on both sides, prompting concerns about the ulterior motives driving 3G Investments and Developments LLC and their actions. The proposed site plan provided by 3G Investments and Developments LLC is alarming. Items are misplaced, dimensions are misrepresented, even spelling mistakes litter this plan, casting doubts on the diligence and accuracy of their proposed site plan. One such misrepresentation on the site plan is that the existing building on the property in question is located 60 feet away from the wooden fence that separates our two properties, as indicated by the scale on the plans. But in fact, the existing building is less than 30 feet away from the wooden fence separating our properties. Equally alarming is the misrepresentation, uh, of the dimensions related to the area proposed for solid waste. The plan depicts it as located 20 feet from the property line. In actuality, it is less than three feet from my property line. The potential proximity of solid waste to my property line raises additional concerns about potential odors, sanitation issues, animals it attracts, and their impacts on the overall quality of life for my family and my neighbors. Additionally, the six-foot wooden tall, uh, six-foot-tall wooden fence running from Selwyn Ave to the property line, dividing our two properties, is inaccurately located by fence separating our two properties, a crucial detail that seems to be overlooked in the presented plan. The potential impact of this oversight on privacy, noise pollution, and the overall living experience for both my family and the neighboring properties cannot be understated. Inaccuracies, misrepresentations, omissions, and discrepancies within the plan cast shadows of doubt on the credibility and intentions behind this proposal. How can a neighborhood and its residents trust a plan that cannot accurately represent the reality of what is being proposed? Adding to these concerns is the lack of clarity surrounding the proposed changes and the track record of zoning violations by the property owner, 3G Investments and Developments LLC, totaling seven code violations since July 1st of this year. Such uncertainties create a murky landscape, leaving our community vulnerable to changes that could potentially and permanently alter the tranquility and integrity of our neighborhood. Moreover, the proposed site plan put forth by 3G Investments and Developments LLC is not only inconsistent with the current surrounding area residential zoning, but it also raises significant concerns in regards to increased traffic congestion, heightened noise pollution, and most importantly, the degradation of safety and well-being of our neighborhood children. The Charlotte Department of Transportation estimates that there will be an additional 315 trips to this residence if rezoned to MUD, optional, which is an additional 8,820 trips monthly, resulting in a staggering 1,050% increase in traffic. Due to the traffic, due to the traffic, visitors to the property will have to exit by turning right onto Park Road in very close proximity to Park Road and Selwyn Avenue intersection, which could impede the flow of traffic as well as obstruct the sidewalk in front of the existing Route 19 bus stop. The additional trips in combination with the proposed parking lot exit could have a significant detrimental impact on one of the busiest intersections in Charlotte. The proposed outdoor patio operating hours, as outlined in the site plan, along with the Charlotte City Noise Ordinance, Section 15-65.1 for commercial establishments, would allow amplified noise emitting from the property up to 85 decibels from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and until 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. I would like to highlight that the Charlotte City Noise Ordinance specifies that 85 decibels is the equivalent to the sound of a running lawnmower. This noise pollution would be less than 12 feet, two of my arms-length, away from my children's bedrooms. The proximity of my young children's bedrooms just 12 feet away from the potential noise pollution originating from a commercial establishment poses a direct threat to their well-being due to the potential sleep disruptions, which could be detrimental to their health and development. The patio and building proximity also introduces concerns regarding the adverse effects of secondhand smoke. The combination of increased noise levels and potential exposure to secondhand smoke from patrons using the proposed establishment's patio and parking lot could have profound implications for my children's overall health and well-being. Adding to the health concerns posed to my children by noise and secondhand smoke, the site plan fails to address the elevation grade of the property under consideration. The hill of my family's home and the property under construction are located on provides a clear sightline over the existing dilapidated, six-foot-tall wooden fence that separates our properties. This implies that customers of the proposed coffee shop, bar, outdoor entertainment establishment would have a direct view into my family's homes and my children's bedrooms. In addition to the planned use, excuse me. In the addition to the planned use of the second floor of the existing home, the proposed site plan allows for the expansion of the second floor, as well as a patio to be constructed on the second floor of the existing home, providing a clear line of sight not only into my family's home and young children's bedrooms, but also into my backyard where my children regularly play. These aspects raise substantial concerns for me and my family and my children's safety and well-being. As the proposed plan would potentially expose them to the view of anyone frequenting this commercial establishment, my concern is not just about privacy, it's the risk of attracting unwarranted attention from individuals who may have malicious intentions, especially when customers with more harmful motives could potentially view and target my children. Such intrusions into our privacy could have lasting implications for my family's sense of security and overall quality of life for my children. Furthermore, it's crucial to acknowledge the sentiment of my neighbors and I that we share. The proposed rezoning appears to solely benefit the petitioner. While many residents, particularly those affected, particularly those most affected, express a staunch opposition to it, notably offices are situated a mere 75 feet from the property under consideration, and just across Park Road, Park-Selwyn Terrace Shopping Center, which is also located 500 feet from the property under consideration, boasts a vibrant array of amenities, including a coffee shop, bar, Mexican and Italian restaurants, a deli, tea shop, Jamba Juice, Great Clips, Harris Teeter, and various other retail establishments. As a community resident profoundly impacted by the proposed changes, I appeal to the city council to scrutinize this proposal meticulously, holding it to the highest standards of accuracy and integrity, while considering the potential detrimental impact this proposed change could have on our community's overall well-being, with a special emphasis on the well-being of our neighborhood children. My hope is that city council will stand with me and my neighbors by protecting the sanctity of our neighborhood, ensuring that any proposed changes are not only accurate but trustworthy and genuinely aligned with the collective best interests of our community and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Ferguson, you have two minutes for your rebuttal.
I think I'll start by acknowledging that the site plan does have typos, and, you know, that was on me. As I mentioned earlier, we had a little snap through on the revision. That said, these, you know, elements are existing elements, so I'm not, to the point of the scale in the site plan, it's not a disingenuous effort to confuse anyone. We're trying to use the existing building. We definitely have more to do to work with staff to get there, and we're going to continue working on it. And I think that just one of the bigger-picture policies, something that speaks to sort of beyond this exact rezoning, in kind of what I mentioned earlier, is that there's a way to modulate how fast change and development happens, and one of those ways is to use existing buildings and to allow them to exist for longer under a different use. Certainly, this property in this area is a very valuable residential area. It could be redeveloped in a residential direction. The goal is to preserve this building and keep it. This rezoning is very clear. It's a conditional rezoning that would lock this building into this place. It would be a very backward way to go about trying to do a larger-scale development. But one of the principles, I believe the petitioner does own two or three houses on this street, and one of the principles is lived on this street for a very long time. And that is why they are all maintained as residential houses. And I guess just to speak to the traffic, as I mentioned, this is going to be a pedestrian forward use, if it ever does become one. With the restrictions on this, with the ability to attract a business tenant, and it's unlikely in the near future to move past being an office and being a house, but in order to stay in office and to stay a house and be compliant with the code of Charlotte going forward, we have to accomplish something. And Mr. Driggs has stepped out, but this would be one petition that might benefit from what he mentioned earlier, with relieving some of the pressure on getting these done quickly. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and certainly am available to talk further about this petition.
Thank you. Mr. Bacari?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, I'm going to start with you, and then Mr. Ferguson, I'll come to you next. So this is, I got to say, before the opposition got to speak, I was going to say this was one of the more confusing rezonings that have come before me in six years. After that, certainly, I feel like this is number one now. So maybe you can help me sort through this.
Sure.
Because this is the first I'm seeing this right now today. So this is N1A now.
Correct.
Before I go to the petitioner's agent to ask some specific questions, there is commercial activity going on in this building today?
That would probably be a good question to ask.
Is allowed to?
If it was, so, under N1A, if you have an existing nonresidential use on a corner lot in Neighborhood One, you can maintain and continue that. Now, it sounds like that may have not been a continuous use, or may not be fully been a full legal nonconformity, so that's where the gray area kind of is, which is, I think, why the rezoning is being pursued. But the N1 district does allow it under certain conditions. I don't know if these conditions have been met, because it doesn't sound like it's been in continual operation when the UDO came into.
Can I address that? When I was on council, there was an actual business operating out of there. It was trucks in the backyard all the time, coming in and out. And so, we had a code inspection, I can't remember, Pat McCory, not Pat McCory, Pat that was running housing was, he, Pat Mumford, thank you. We had a review of it in code enforcement, and then it went residential. The house was renovated and painted, and it served as a residential unit. It does not have the trucks and the things in the backyard that used to operate out of it. So I drive through there all the time. It's one of my ways to get home, and I have not seen business in there since we had the code violation.
Yep. It's gotten even more complex. Thank you.
I'm glad to add to the complexity of anything.
That's great. I enjoyed that. Okay, so, so we'll get, I guess for you, adaptive reuse, so it's been tossed around a bit. Is that, when you think, like, it doesn't feel like adaptive reuse, like, the way we normally use it of, like, really old building, preserve it. It's more like residential building, don't let it become a commercial building and knock down. Do you have any perspective on that, just out of gut reaction right now?
No real gut reaction. I mean, we see it, particularly when it's more of a single-family structure. We see those a lot of times convert to small offices, tax office, real estate office, things like that. We've seen them convert to other uses, but typically, when you see residences convert to a nonresidential use, it's more of that office, you know, smaller, kind of scale-based, so.
So, and finally, before I move to Mr. Ferguson, if there was not continuous commercial use in the site, which we'll find that out, what is that, how does that, what bearing does that put on where we are right now?
None much on the rezoning side, because what they're doing is requesting a zoning that would allow it to operate in a fashion that maybe it had in the past, prior to any code violations. So this would essentially kind of start us from scratch and say, okay, now the district allows all these other uses outside of just a single-family home.
Basically, just a precedent or not a precedent to maybe point to as we make another decision.
Correct.
The bottom line is, we look at this map, it's N1A, completely surrounding it, and we're going to make a decision, should it or shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Ferguson, is there an existing commercial use today?
There is a small-scale office use going on, and it is continuous going back to when I was at AG. I mean, it was operated as a retail seamstress shop, it was operated with something, prior to my clients acquiring it, was operated at a higher scale, and that has been scaled down. And we began this in 2020, in part derived from the situation, because dealing with legal nonconforming uses in Charlotte can be challenging. Dealing with it in the midst of a change from code is more confusing.
So there is a commercial use there today?
A part of the building was built for commercial use attached to the residential unit, that is.
Is there a commercial use today?
Yeah, it's an office.
So I can go, it's an office?
Just a private office. So it's been scaled down to not being, you know, not being as, but, I mean, there are, it is essentially, if you had had a white-collar office where people, clients could come in.
Okay. So do you have a game plan for what this is going to be?
As sort of reference in the presentation, the main game plan is to alleviate this confusion so that it can continue to exist as a residence and an office.
I think we've only elevated the confusion.
There is not, there is not a, the purpose of going through this is very hard to have economic viability for a building to exist if it cannot change to adapt to what it wants to be. And I know you mentioned that it's surrounded by N1, but directly across the street is a giant office complex.
Yeah, listen, it's real close to where I live in the community every day, so what's across the street is a very, very different thing than what's on that side of the street. I think we can all agree there. But where I'm struggling right now is, I see the angle you're trying to portray here. Listen, I'm nine times out of 10, benefit of the doubt to the petitioner until otherwise. The argument you're making seems flawed, because an adaptive reuse and maintaining and giving clarity to the thing that maybe or maybe doesn't exist, which is commercial versus residential, I think is, that's the problem right now. So you're trying to lock in commercial for something that I don't think everyone fully believes or knows is commercial, a commercial use.
Well, I mean, I think the commercial use of it's pretty established. I don't, I mean, I wouldn't get into the weeds on that, but it is.
It's N1A, as we just discussed, and surrounded by, which everyone would say, unless there was some kind of precedent, right?
Well, I believe the commercial use of it goes before the old code. It has been used in that manner, is my understanding of it. So like, it's a legal nonconforming use going back for 30-something years. So, I mean, I don't know.
You're trying to argue that this should have a commercial use going forward, right?
Yes, we are petitioning to allow, in the open broadly, saying to allow it to.
But you're not able to tell us what that commercial use could be.
There is not a tenant to come in and do the commercial use. Because the rezoning was required, we're seeking the ability to do it.
It's a speculative rezoning, if you will.
I suppose, I mean, if that's what your definition is, but it's definitely, it's not possible to do a chicken-egg thing.
We've done speculative rezonings here for various reasons, always highly uncomfortable for me, but sometimes we get behind them. The point is, if you're doing this in an area right next to neighbors, and you don't have a plan, the whole conditional points of this are irrelevant, because you're saying, well, whatever we're going to do, we're going to do. It could be a bar, it could be an archery facility, for all we know, right? So I don't fully buy that. Let me ask one more question, and I'll be done here. Is what he said accurate, that you've bought up parcels of land, your clients bought up parcels of land throughout that area?
My clients lived on the street for 30 years. He has acquired property, residences, that he has renovated, and then some sold, I believe, and some rented.
Is there a broader strategy at play right now with these properties, or it's just?
No, and as I mentioned it, by locking into conditional rezoning, requiring the existence of this building, and requiring a rezoning of this parcel, which is what we are proposing, is locking this building into exactly this footprint, allowing it to be used adaptively in other ways, but that would require rezoning to do anything. It would be the wrong direction to go.
The struggle I have with that is you're locking it in for commercial use versus before it would continue to move forward in residential.
We are actually, it would be allowed to retain its character as a residential use as well. We're asking for.
I hear the argument. It's not really convincing me right now, so.
I mean, it is currently leased to a residential tenant. That is the use right now, in addition to the office.
So, over the next 30 days, again, first time I'm seeing it, so I'll drop into the details. Dave, I need to rely on you to help unpack this for me and figure out what's going on. But, I mean, knowing this spot in general, as a residential part, that does not really give me any precedent from what's happening across the street, hearing what we've just heard from a neighbor, and just having such vagueness of this, it doesn't seem right, and unless something drastically changes in my understanding of it, I'll be opposing it. So, but I'll give it the benefit of the doubt over the next couple of weeks.
We will be working hard to provide clarity on that.
I can't wait.
Thank you, Mr. Bacari. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. And I guess we can talk offline, Dave, but this reminds me of a petition that some of the council supported before in NODA. And it was very, very close to a residential home, and I think it was going to be zoned for maybe a bar or something like that. And I wanted to know what the difference is. I know that that was prior to the UDO, but it feels the same.
We have similar contexts, where we've got an existing neighborhood that might have a restaurant or some kind of commercial use adjacent to it. We've done a few, you know, over the last year or so that I can think of. Some of the differences in those were, they were, some of them were used already for a restaurant. They were looking to maybe get some expansion or get some clarity to address some things that they needed to, that they couldn't unless the zoning of their property changed. In those instances, we focused a lot on hours of operation, outdoor, existence of any outdoor, you know, dining or outdoor entertainment, where those would be located. We typically wanted those away from the residential component that might be adjacent. So we have seen examples where these kind of uses can coexist, but we just haven't seen enough on this particular one to feel like we're at that spot, which is why our recommendation is what it is. And we'll continue to work with everybody to see what kinds of things might be able to be baked in to get addressed on this plan, and determine where we might end up once we see some changes. And now that we've heard some comments from Mr. Christian as well, just make sure that a lot of those concerns, if they can be addressed, how? And if not... be baked in to get addressed on this plan and determine where we might end up once we see some changes. And now that we've heard some comments from Mr. Christian as well, just make sure that a lot of those concerns, if they can be addressed, how? And if not, we'll just have to work together to see what the solutions may be and if there's potential for us to, you know, look at this in a different way. But it's going to take a little bit of continued work.
And I know the city is growing and changing, but I think we, as a council and as a city, really need to look at the policies when it's this close to residential home. I think that Mr. Christian brought up some great points as far as being able to see his children and in the children's room and the secondhand smoke and the music and the quality of life. So I just think if if we are making changes in the U D O, maybe there are these transitional, you know, boundaries. But we have to be just very careful. Even in the NODA, we heard the same arguments, and we just have to, as a council, be consistent and just recognize where our priorities are as well. Every, every parcel is not for every use. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Watlington?
Can you please send us your comments? Thanks.
Any additional comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any oppose? Excellent. We'll move on to agenda item number thirty seven, petition twenty twenty one dash zero eight five by Raven Property Group, LLC. The location is approximately five point eight six acres located on the east side of China Grove Church Road, south, south of Westinghouse Boulevard and north of Blue Railway in District Three, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is M L one, M L two, and N one B. The proposed zoning is I two. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to the site and building design. So we will hear from staff on this, and we have two speakers who are for this, Keith McVane and David Veronan. We have no speakers who are against it. So Mr. McVane and Mr. Veronan will have three minutes in aggregate. Thank you.
Good evening. Petition twenty twenty one dash zero eight five is approximately five point eight six acres located on the east side of China Grove Church Road, south of Westinghouse Boulevard and north of Blue Railway. The current zoning is primarily M L one. There's the triangular area to the north is M L two. The yellow shaded area to the south is N one B. Proposed zoning is I two C D. Twenty forty policy map recommends manufacturing and logistics for the majority of the site, N one for the southern portion. The proposal is for all uses in the I two zoning district, including specifically outdoor storage, trucking company, trucking operations, truck and trailer repair and maintenance, trucking logistics and office uses, storage of trailers and trucks. Floor area ratio would be limited to zero point eight, allows for up to seven principal buildings in addition to accessory buildings and structures, maintains the existing three driveways from China Grove Church Road, commits to implementing eight foot planting strip and five foot sidewalk along China Grove Church Road, except where it conflicts with the existing off-street parking, establishes a thirty foot setback along China Grove Church Road, and also provides a ninety one foot Class A buffer along a portion of the site's southern boundary, as you can see in green. The petition would resolve a zoning violation while improving the current conditions. It is consistent for the majority of the site, a small portion of the southern end is inconsistent. Staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design. And I'll be happy to take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McVane.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of zoning committee, Keith McVane with Moore Van Allen, Assistant Raven Property Group. David Veronan, the petition was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but will be available to answer questions if any come up. As Joe mentioned, a site just located south of Westinghouse Boulevard and to the west of South Boulevard. Currently, majority of the site is owned to M L one, a small portion M L two, and then a small portion also N one B. This site has been the the site of Midway Trucking is the current tenant on the property. It's also owned by the petitioner, Raven Property Group. They've been on an operation here since nineteen fourteen. The buildings at the front of the site have been on the site since nineteen seventy nine. What has occurred, as Joe mentioned, there is an existing zoning violation on the site. As a trucking company has become more successful and has grown, the area of the site that has that was used has been used or is being used for the parking of trucks and trailers when they're not on the road has grown to the point where it's no longer an accessory use and has become a principal use, not allowed in the I one zoning district or the M L one zoning district. So that's the reason for the zoning change. The area of the site that is being rezoned from the N one B is actually being zoned to I one to meet a buffer requirement. So that area will not be used for for trucking parking purposes, but really to meet the buffer requirements of the M of the I two zoning district. The trucking and storage is to the rear of the existing building. No changes would occur along China Grove Church Grove as, other than landscaping and sidewalk to meet ordinance standards. We will work with Joe and staff to address the remaining site plan issues enumerated in the staff analysis. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move to close.
Okay, we have the.
They're going to fix the, Mr. McVane, you said you.
Hold on, Ms. Brown, would you like to be recognized?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to make a statement?
Yes, please.
Ms. Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Apologize for that. Mr. McVane, I want to say you said you're going to work with the staff to get the zone violation corrected.
Yes, ma'am, this is.
You said that it was approved.
First step in that process.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? We had a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to agenda item number thirty eight, petition number twenty twenty two dash one sixteen by Carmel Hills, Inc. The location is approximately fourteen point four six acres located along the southeast side of Carmel Road, west of Colony Road, and east of Moreland Farm Road in District Six, Mr. Bakari's district. The current zoning is N one A. The proposed zoning is I N S T C D. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation. We do not have, we have one speaker who would like to address this petition in the affirmative. So we will hear from staff first, and then Mr. Walter Fields, if you would come down to the podium, and you will have three minutes in aggregate after staff. Thank you.
Petition twenty twenty two one sixteen is located along the southeast side of Carmel Road, west of Colony Road, and east of Moorhead Farms Road. Site is approximately fourteen point four six acres in size. We've currently developed an assisted and independent living senior facility. It's currently zoned N one A, Neighborhood One District. Proposed zoning is institutional C D, a conditional legacy district. The twenty forty policy map recommends campus place type for the site. The institutional C D district is consistent with the campus place type. Some background, on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment granted several variances to correct some setback issues, you know, dating from, you know, the original development of the property decades ago to bring the site into compliance prior to moving forward with this rezoning request. Proposed development calls for the development of assisted and independent living facilities and related accessory uses, a new wing of the main building containing up to twelve thousand square feet, up to thirteen new cottage units on the property, the relocation and addition of surface parking. There's architectural and landscaping standards that are in keeping with the existing development and the residential setting of the area. Transportation improvements include utilizing the two existing driveways along Carmel Road for vehicular access and dedication of additional right of way along Carmel Road. There are four outstanding issues related to transportation noted on staff analysis, but one has already been addressed due to the removal of a parcel along Colony Road. The remaining issues include relocating the future back of curb and gutter along Carmel Road, installing six foot sidewalk, eight foot planting strip, a commitment to construct a buffer bicycle facility along Carmel Road to meet the adopted bikes policy, a conditional note specifying that transportation improvements will be completed prior to the first C O or to give a detailed phasing plan. Staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of the outstanding issues related to transportation, as the petition is consistent with the campus place type and institutional zoning would better align with the policy map while the development is in keeping with the residential character of the area. I'm happy to take any questions following Mr. Fields' presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Fields, you have three minutes.
Mayor Protem and members of council and members of zoning committee, I'm Walter Fields, representing Carmel Hills, a community which was approved originally by the Board of County Commissioners in the early seventies and has been on this site since then. This is a rezoning to the institutional district, which is required to expand the uses on the property that have been there nearly fifty years. As Mac said, some additional cottages on the site, an additional wing on the main building up front for assisted living, and then just some relocation of other features on the property. If we can get my presentation up on the screen up there, and maybe stop the clock until it is, I'll go ahead and address the a couple of concerns that were mentioned, the four outstanding transportation issues. The last one is a note that I simply failed to include. It's a boilerplate note that goes on all zoning. That's not an issue. All the references, as Mac said, to Colony Road have been removed. But there's two issues, and what I wanted to be able to show you in this PowerPoint presentation was the streetscape along Carmel Road. It is a, if you've been by the site and you weren't looking for it, you didn't even know it was there. It's it's well established with trees and vegetation coming all the way down to the sidewalk and a couple of issues that are of concern to us. One is that C dot is requesting that we construct a bike lane on Carmel Road. I looked in every source that are reasonably accessible to the public, and I can't find any plans for any other efforts to construct a bike lane on Carmel Road. That would require removing a whole lot of the vegetation on the front of the site, taking down trees in order to replant trees. That just didn't seem very productive. And that was the biggest issue in our in our most recent full-scale community meeting. Couple of community leaders are here, and they are in support of our rezoning, but they're also in support of maintaining the streetscape. Interestingly enough, the city has a sidewalk project directly adjacent to our site. And again, I had a slide that showed how it actually crossed over onto our property. We're simply proposing to extend, there it is, to extend the project that the city was already constructing. There's the streetscape, a vertical shot looking down Carmel Road is in the upper portion of the site. This is the difference in the streetscape that's there today in the upper illustration and what would be remaining if we simply went through and tore out everything that's already there and then replanted trees and built the sidewalk back. The city's project is directly adjacent to our site. In fact, in that image that you see, the right hand end of that is over on the Carmel Hills property. And what it proposes, that red line is our corner, what it proposes is an extension of a seven foot sidewalk at the back of the curb. This is what the city is constructing, not only adjacent to our site, but actually over on to our site. We think that probably is the best way to proceed to ex. Can I have a little bit of time since I didn't have my images up there?
Unfortunately, Mr. Fields.
Okay.
You can't have additional time. However, if there are any questions for you, you can answer them. Mr. Bakari?
Can I just specifically pose to staff and then Mr. Fields, if you need to, is there, is there any reason to believe that C dot and staff cannot, over the next couple of weeks, come together with the petitioner and the neighborhood groups to see the potential for this buffer need he's talking about? Or what is it, the streetscape? Mr. Fields, go ahead, sorry. If you want to clarify that big, specific takeaway, which is, I think, is the main takeaway right now, right?
Yes, the the main concern of the community and of Carmel Hills is to be able to preserve as much of the existing streetscape as possible. And a city project that actually is on our site is what we propose to extend and down our entire frontage. Only then will the city, when it comes back to do major planning on Carmel Road, then they'll know whether they're going to have a bike lane there, whether there's any need to take the trees down, so on and so forth. We think their requests, and they are requests, not requirements, are just a little premature.
So, okay, so that's the main takeaway right now that's left unaddressed that the community, as well as staff on both sides, is not in a full alignment with, is that right?
The community is in support of our position to maintain the streetscape as best as possible.
It's staff who has not, who has not finalized the ability to do that or not, right?
That's correct. That remains the the two comments in the C dot section, and we have to have that resolved by Thursday.
Is there any reason to believe that we could not find some kind of conclusion with C dot and broader staff on the streetscape capability? Or is it a nonstarter like right now and we know it? Or is it something we can work offline on?
I would defer to C dot.
I think Jake Carpenter with C dot, the the bike lane issue we can work through because that involves moving the curb, and that's about a bigger bike connectivity piece. The sidewalk issue is a significant concern. It is ordinance, and there is substandard sidewalk across the entire frontage, as well as no planting strip. And so both of those would meet the requirements for improving the streetscape. So right now, there's four foot back of curb sidewalk, and requirements would go to eight foot planting strip and six foot sidewalk. And so there is a little bit of impact on some of the trees and existing vegetation. But it's, you know, it's a pedestrian safety concern and part of our standards for the whole pedestrian network in the city.
So there is, there is, with our policy that we've just adopted, no real wiggle room on?
We have some adjustment to streetscape for, for instance, heritage trees or things like that. So at this point, we don't have any information on, you know, a tree survey or things like that, to be able to work through those. And so the way we've handled it in the past is to have a commitment to do the streetscape. And when it comes time for the engineering documents, that can be revisited if there needs to be adjustments made.
Got it. If so, if you guys wouldn't mind, just take a quicker glimpse at it now and see if there's anything you can deduce that we can have this conversation, and then we'll offline work it as best we can over the next month.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Any other comments?
Thank you.
I have a a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any oppose? That's unanimous. We'll move on to agenda item.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number thirty nine, petition number twenty twenty three one eighteen by the City of Charlotte. The location is approximately thirty eight acres located north of the intersection of Wilkinson Boulevard and Little Rock Road, west of Stafford Drive and east of Berry Drive in District Three, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is M L two A N D O and M L one A N D O. The proposed zoning is R A C A N D O. Staff recommends approval of this petition. We have one person to speak in the affirmative, Mr. Stuart Hare. If you would come down to the podium, you'll have three minutes after staff provides their presentation.
Thank you. Twenty twenty three dash one eighteen is approximately thirty eight acres located at the intersection of Wilkinson Boulevard and Little Rock Road, just north of Charlotte Douglas Airport. The current zoning is a mix of M L one and M L two. The entirety of the site is within the airport noise disclosure overlay. Requested zoning is regional activity center with the airport overlay carrying forward. The twenty forty policy map calls for regional activity center for the the vast majority of the site, as you see in blue. Small area is recommended for innovation mixed use place type. Staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to take any questions following Mr. Hare's presentation.
Mr. Hare?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council, zoning committee, and staff. Thank you for the chance to be here this evening. We have no presentation. I am here purely to help answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Yes, I just have one question. It says right here that inconsistent with the innovation mixed use of a small. It says right here that inconsistent with the innovation mixed-use of a small portion of the site, what does that mean?
So if we could go back to the policy map, there we go. So the area in blue is recommended for regional activity center place type, which the request for regional activity center zoning is consistent. The small area in white to the right of the screen is recommended for innovation mixed-use place type. So that small portion is inconsistent, whereas the remainder is consistent.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that to me.
Okay. Mr. Drakes?
Mr. Hare, we appreciate the airport, and I just wanted to say, I think on behalf of all, let's happy holidays to you. Please take the message back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any additional questions? Move to close.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. We'll move on to agenda item number 40, petition number 2023-012 by Pope and Land Enterprises, Inc. The location is 20.44 acres located in three development areas. Development area A includes 16.01 acres and is located south of Yorkmont Road and west of Price Lane. Development areas B and C total 4.43 acres and are located north of Tybola Road and south of National Ave in District III, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is MUD-O. The proposed zoning is MUD-O SPA. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation. We have two speakers, Richard Jersey and Matt Langston, in the affirmative. You guys will have two minutes in aggregate after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Petition 2023-012 is approximately 20.44 acres located in three different development areas, highlighted in yellow. Development area A is on Yorkmont Road, includes 16 acres. Development areas B and C are 4.43 acres located along Tybola Road. This is part of the city park developments. Current zoning is MUD-optional. Proposed zoning is a site plan amendment to that MUD-O zoning. 2040 policy map recommends community activity center for areas B and C in blue and neighborhood one place type for the area in yellow on Yorkmont Road. The larger city park rezoning took place in 2007. This rezoning is calling for, in rezoning area A, 220 townhome condominium or single-family units, hotel rooms, 60,000 square feet of retail. In rezoning area B, 30,000 square feet of retail, 150 hotel rooms, another 30,000 square feet of retail that could include a convenience store, restaurant, or an EDEE. Rezoning area C includes 15,000 square feet of retail, including convenience store, restaurant, EDEE, or office, as well as 100,000 square feet of storage. Petitioners committing to the following transportation improvements: re-alignment of Yorkmont Road for a potential extension by others to Spear Boulevard and Billy Graham Parkway, construction of a roundabout at Yorkmont Road and Spear Boulevard, installation of a traffic signal at Tybola Road and Spear Boulevard, as well as crosswalk improvements at Tybola Road, City Park Drive, Tybola Road, and South Tryon Street, and Tybola Road and North Falls Drive. Portion of the site, as I mentioned, is consistent, development areas B and C with the community activity center place type recommended. The northeastern portion along Yorkmont Road is inconsistent. However, the rezoning would allow for a mixture of uses and a reallocation of uses from the larger city park rezoning from many years ago. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation. And I'll take any questions after Mr. Langston's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Langston, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. Good evening. I'm here with Matt Langston, Landworks Design Group. Richard Jersey is here with Pope and Land Enterprises. They're the petitioner. Joe's covered it pretty well. We've worked with Pope and Land since 2014 on development of city park. As Joe mentioned, the rezoning was a 2007 rezoning which contemplated a totally different economy, and so we've had to come back with some site plan amendments from time to time to make adjustments to the plan. These are the last three segments of the land plan, and so we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, do I have to...
Close.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to agenda item number 41, 2023-045 by Grub Properties. The location is approximately 10.6 acres, bound by the south side of Abbey Place, east side of Park Road, west side of Hedgemore Drive, and north side of Mockingbird Lane in District 6, Mr. Bakari's district. The current zoning is MUD-O. Proposed zoning is MUD-O SPA. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and urban forestry. We have one person, Mr. Brown, will have three minutes after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Petition 2023-045 is bound by south side of Abbey Place, east side of Park Road, and west side of Hedgemore Drive, and the north side of Mockingbird Lane. Site is approximately 10.6 acres and is currently developed office, retail, institutional, and residential. Site is currently zoned MUD-optional, mixed-use urban design district optional. The proposed zoning is MUD-O SPA, mixed-use development district optional, site plan amendment. The 2040 policy map recommends the community activity center place type. The MUD district is consistent with the CAC place type. A little background, the site was rezoned in 2016 to allow for 600,000 square feet of commercial use, including a minimum of 5,000 square feet, maximum 35,000 square feet of ground floor retail, and 450 multifamily dwelling units in five development areas. Site plan amendment calls for an increase in the number of residential units from 450 to 550, but the building footprints will remain the same. Staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, urban forestry. Just a couple of minor issues. Site plan needs to show the dimension of the future back curbs from the center line. Tree survey is required. Missing street trees along Hedgemore Drive, Mockingbird Lane, and Abbey Place. Happy to take any questions following Mr. Brown's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Also here from Grub. This is really kind of the coming to fruition of a large project. We actually worked with Grub team on the zoning in 2015 for this entire block. Here we are almost 10 years later, it's come to fruition, and Grub is ready to add really the last piece. The reason for the zoning tonight is really a change in the way that people live in the last 10 years. On the site, as Max mentioned, we'd have the same building footprint, but we're asking for additional units. The reason is, people, it used to be people wanted twos and threes, but the young professionals that are living here want to live in this urban area, want to have their own space. Many work from home, so it's not necessarily an increase in people living there, but more individual units. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions?
Move to close. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to agenda item number 42, petition number 2023-076 by Discovery Development, Inc. The location is approximately 4.5 acres located along the east side of Old Statesville Road, south of I-485, in the ETJ with the BOC in District 1, Ms. Powell's district, and closest to the city council district number 4, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is N1B. Proposed zoning is N2C. Staff recommends this petition. After staff's presentation, Mr. Fox will have three minutes for his presentation.
Thank you. This site is four and a half acres along the east side of Old Statesville Road, just south of I-485, and it is currently outside city limits, as you said. A number of the parcels in this vicinity are vacant, with the nearest development being the apartments along the site's east side. The site is currently zoned Neighborhood 1B, and they're requesting to go to Neighborhood 2C, which is consistent with the 2040 policy map's recommendation for Neighborhood 2 in this area. This is a conventional petition, so there is no associated site plan. Staff recommends approval of this petition, given the consistency with the policy map and how the petition will align with the adjacent UR2 apartment development, as well as the planned apartment and mixed-use development that's across from this rezoning site. And I'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of the zoning committee. Happy to be here on behalf of the petitioner, Discovery Development Incorporated. This is a conventional rezoning request relating to the current zoning being an N1B to a N2C. We did hold the required community meeting with regards to this petition. There was no one who attended, therefore there was no opposition expressed to this proposed use. This site, as you know, is south of 485 and Old Statesville Road. It is currently a vacant tract of land, 4-acre tract of land that is ideal for the proposed and intended use for a childcare facility. The adjacent uses, I'll go back, the adjacent uses to this property include a lot of multifamily development that is in the area. You can see that there is MUD, CD, UR2, as well as OFC with regards to its tract. There's N1B to the south, and the current zoning being N1B will be, if this is approved, an N2C use. As I mentioned, the community meeting was held. There were no potential uses, and I will, at this point, wish you a happy holiday and yield some time back to you for this long evening. Good to see everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. One of the things that the city staff, remember, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. What's your name?
Holly Kramer.
I'm sorry.
Holly Kramer.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kramer. You mentioned that this is close to a multifamily complex, and in the petition I see a petition near Huck's Road. Is that the closest development? Is this near Huck's Road, Mr. Fox?
I can't say it. I don't know.
It's certainly not directly adjacent, but there is that multifamily development just to the east that you can see on this aerial image here. And there was also an approved apartment complex, I think with some mixed uses on the other side of Old Statesville Road that hasn't been built out yet.
Right. And we have quite a bit of development that's pending that's in that area, and we already hear from residents. I've heard from residents since 2019 about trying to get off Huck's Road and onto Old Statesville. This is one of those, and there's a light that's a part of a future development. I know we're working with, I think, Norfolk Southern, but these are the kind of effects, if you will, that the neighbors feel when the city's continuing to grow, and we have to make sure these infrastructure items are addressed. I also have a question. There's comments from Charlotte Water. Ms. Kramer? And it says, can you just explain to me what that means? I don't know if there's someone here from Charlotte Water. It says Charlotte Water currently does not have sewer system accessible for the rezoning boundary under review.
Yes, so it's currently not built out to the site. That's something that would be looked further into during the permitting stage of the process. So Charlotte Water, especially when these are conventional petitions, they provide advisory comments, and they say where the lowest or closest water system and sewer systems are in relation to the site. So if this were approved, it would be further looked at by Charlotte Water, and they would assess how utilities could be extended to the site. But currently, it says that there's no sewer system accessible at this site.
So the process would be for us to approve conventional, not knowing the details, and then Charlotte Water would do the work to require the infrastructure?
Yes, so at this time, it being conventional, we don't have an exact unit count or proposed development, but Charlotte Water would look into it further and assess their capacity for this area in permitting generally.
Secondly, there's a transportation summary, and it also talks about a CTR will be required during the permitting if the site generates site trips over the ordinance threshold. So in reading this, it doesn't feel like we have the infrastructure to really support any more growth in that area?
So the comprehensive transportation review is something that would be triggered in the permitting process. Because we don't have unit counts right now, it'd be impossible to say whether the CTR... It's not necessary right now because it is conventional, but it would come into play during the permitting part of the process. And the CTR would specify any improvements that the developer would need to make to the area for the multimodal mitigation point system.
Okay. As I stated, the Huck's Road area, residents are already, and I can forward my colleagues' emails, they're sitting at this light for 20 minutes. We have some comments from Charlotte Water and also Charlotte Transportation. Is there a reason that this was filed as conventional and not as a conditional?
So we didn't see the need for a conditional rezoning here, given the consistency with the policy map, and given that it's recommending or calling for N2C and the surrounding development. It's just not incompatible with what's already on the ground there, so we believe that a conventional rezoning was appropriate in this case. And I did just do the measurements, I apologize. It is about .7 of a mile away from Huck's Road.
Okay, we can talk offline?
I'll talk with you.
All right, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Move to close.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Oppose? That's unanimous. And just as a reminder, some of my colleagues who are not currently at the dais, if they're here at the beginning of the meeting and they leave their dais, they are an affirmative vote, which is why we say it's unanimous unless there's opposition. We'll move on to agenda item number 43, petition number 2023-083 by Nicole Frambach. The location is approximately .4 acres located on the west side of Mayfair Avenue, south of Seymour Drive, and north of Markland Drive in District 3, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is N1C. The proposed zoning is N2B. Staff recommends approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Ms. Frambach, you will have three minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. 2023-083, it's .4 acres on Mayfair Avenue. It is just south of Seymour Drive and north of Markland Drive. Going to jump to the zoning map here. You can see this petition has two parcels that are kind of sandwiched in between two existing N2B-zoned properties. Also, what you can't quite see on this zoning map here is one of the buildings is actually split in half by a zoning district, so part of the building is zoned N1, part of it is zoned N2. So we've got some general cleanup that we're taking care of through this rezoning petition to create two parcels with the same zoning as the adjacent parcels for N2B that will correct some of the challenges or any kind of zoning complications with the existing building, and then also allow for some compatible development to occur, you know, in a moderate scale between these two parcels that otherwise really wouldn't be able to be developed with any real compatible uses other than some single-family or duplex or triplex. So this cleans up a couple of items, like I said, with the zoning being between the building, and then just making, just for a uniform kind of block pattern here between these two N2B existing zone parcels. Policy map does call for Neighborhood 1. We did talk about this pretty substantially with our long-range team and felt that the Neighborhood 2 place type wouldn't be inappropriate here, particularly given that we've got N2B, like I said, both north and south of this property. So we didn't have any significant concerns. There really weren't any potential conditions that we could consider. We've got height protections built into the Neighborhood 2 district when it's against Neighborhood 1. There would be any screening requirements would kick in through the ordinance. It's a small enough site where we wouldn't see significant transportation impact, so... It's a small enough site where we wouldn't see significant transportation impact, so those are some of the reasons that we chose to go with a conventional petition in this instance. So with that, we do recommend approval of the petition. We did mention it's inconsistent with the policy map, but I do feel like it's an appropriate location for the N2B, particularly given the same zoning both north and south of this property. So with that, we'll turn it over to the petitioner, and we'll take any questions you may have following our presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Frombuck?
Good evening and happy holidays, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Just want to say I'm Nicole Frombuck, I'm the petitioner. I think that staff did a great job of outlining this. It's pretty straightforward, a split zoning. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We had no attendees, so feel as though we don't have any contention against us, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Brown?
When did you have your neighborhood meeting?
It was the, November 15th or 17th somewhere. Sorry, I don't remember the exact date.
Will you be able to get that information to me?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, looked like it was held on November 16th, 6:00 PM, West Boulevard Library. And yeah, no attendance on the community meeting report, but I'll be happy to forward the community meeting report to you as well.
Okay. And I also see that the petition is inconsistent with the 2040 policy map, which you stated that?
Yes. Yeah, we mentioned it was inconsistent. Place type does call for Neighborhood 1. Again, we did work with our long-range team on this one to really talk through it because it is a little bit of an outlier piece, but essentially, the policy map doesn't also reflect the existing zoning of, you know, the parcel that's here and the parcel that's here where really they probably could be reflected as Neighborhood 2 on the place type map, given what's existing. So having this turned to an orange color will likely look at these two parcels as well when we go through the area planning process, when that's completed, to see if there's any additional changes to the map, but didn't feel like the inconsistency was a concern enough to not be supportive of the request.
And my last question is, did you have any members of council to show up?
To the neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
No. No one showed up at all.
That's all the questions that I have.
Okay, any additional questions? Just for clarification.
Ms. Molina? Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just, so just for the public's knowledge, so we have, or maybe this is better suited for you, David, so we missed the opportunity to engage the public in this. We can, if there was a concern, we could always, at any point, you know, involve the community. And, you know, the council member, you would have that, you know, bandwidth to do that if there was something that you saw that, you know, you were interested in, you know, raising the concern for the public. But from the petition, I guess, milestone concern, do, you know, can you kind of clarify the opportunities where we have for the public to meet?
So the community meeting was posted and the neighbors were noticed of it. Like I said, that was held on November 16th. There were no attendees, so that official community meeting that needs to be noticed and held was satisfied, you know, if they want to have some follow-up or if you want to recommend there, if there are any other neighborhood leaders in the area that you'd like the petitioner to reach out to, I think that's always a welcome suggestion, just to make sure that they don't have any other items that they may want to either address or they just want questions answered. So the official community meeting was held, but that doesn't preclude any other follow-up conversations or any other outreach that you'd like the petitioner to maybe consider or take on between now and time of decision.
That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem. Motion to close?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We go to agenda item number 44. Petition number 2023-084 by Clackton Properties. The location is approximately 1.682 acres located alongside, along the west side of Hawthorne Lane, north of Central Lane, and east of Louise Avenue in District 1, my district. The current zoning is ML2 and MUD CD. The proposed zoning is TOD NC. Staff recommends this petition, and we have four community members who have signed up to speak in the affirmative of this. Mr. McVain, John Beal, Herb Coleman, and Hugh Seitel. You all will have three minutes in aggregate after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is under two acres located along Hawthorne Lane, and also, this is going to be the site of the planned Phase 3 of the Gold Line. This area is between the Belmont and Possum Midwood neighborhoods. The site is largely zoned ML2 with a portion of it zoned MUD conditional, mixed-use development district conditional. That's from a 2013 rezoning that entitled the adjacent apartment complex, and the requested zoning district is TOD NC, Transit Oriented Development Neighborhood Center, which is consistent with the Neighborhood Center adopted place type for the area. This is a conventional petition, so there is no associated site plan. The site is within a half-mile of the Gold Line's existing Sunnyside Station and will be directly along the Gold Line once the next phase is constructed. This site and general area is transitioning away from manufacturing and logistics uses and zoning, and this petition would bring the site in alignment with the policy map. Staff recommends approval of this petition. I'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McVain.
Good evening again, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, members of zoning committee, Keith McVain with Morvan Allen, Assistant Clackton Properties. As you mentioned, Hugh Seitel and Herb Coleman, Herb Coleman and John Beal are here and are available to answer questions. Holly's done a great job explaining this location and the site. We did meet with the Belmont Land Use Committee and went to the Belmont Neighborhood Monthly Meeting at the beginning of the month. Had about 20 people attend. They did take a vote at the end of the meeting and voted to support the petition, and they have sent us a letter supporting the request. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. McVain. Any questions? I will just add a comment that I have spoken with Mr. Vain about this particular petition, and I am fully aware that Belmont supports the petition and has been properly scrubbed into the process, so thank you for that process. Can, is there a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, and we will move on to petition number, agenda number 45. Petition number 2023-086 by Stephen Omenberstig. I hope I did not butcher your name. The location is approximately .47 acres located along the east side of Castleton Road, west of Craig Avenue, and north of North Sharon Amity Road in District 5, Ms. Molina's district. The current zoning is N1A and the proposed zoning is N1C. The staff recommends this petition, and we only have one speaker, Mr. Omenberstig.
Imoberstig.
Imoberstig. Excellent, Imoberstig. You will have three minutes after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is under half an acre along the east side of Castleton Road in the Cotswold area. This area is largely developed with single-family neighborhoods, as you can see in that aerial image. The current zoning is N1A, Neighborhood 1A, and they're requesting to go to Neighborhood 1C, which is still consistent with the policy map's recommendation for Neighborhood 1 in this area. This is another conventional petition, so there is no associated site plan. The N1C district is very comparable with the N1A district with identical allowed uses, so those primary differences between the N1A and the N1C districts are related to dimensional standards such as minimal law areas and setbacks. Staff recommends approval of this petition, and I'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Imoberstig.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm just here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? I have a motion to close. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing public hearing, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. We will move on to agenda item number 46. Petition number 2023-0101 by 3100 Balcom Road LLC. The location is approximately 1.704 acres located along the northeast side of Balcom Road and the northwest side of Wisdom Lane, north of Mallard Creek Road in District 2, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is O1 and the proposed zoning is N2B. Staff recommends the approval of this petition, and Mr. William Wallace will have three minutes to speak after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Petition 2023-101 is located on the northeast side of Balcom Road, northwest of Wisdom Lane, and north of Mallard Creek Road. Site is approximately 1.7 acres and is currently undeveloped. Site is zoned O1CD, Office conditional. Proposed zoning is N2B, Neighborhood 2, conventional district. 2040 policy map recommends the Neighborhood 2 place type. The N2B district is consistent with this place type. This is a conventional rezoning petition. There's not an associated site plan and would permit any use allowed in the N2B district. Staff recommends approval of this petition as the N2B district aligns with the policy map. Site is located within a short walking distance of grocery store, variety of retail shops, medical offices, institutional recreational facilities, and three advice routes. Happy to take any questions following Mr. Wallace's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, members of staff in the committee. Happy holidays to you all and your families. Appreciate your time this evening. I'll keep my presentation brief as it is conventional. This is in line with the policy map, and the petitioner will be looking to switch from the current designation of O1CD to the N2B designation. And we did hold our community meeting. There were some adjacent property owners that attended. We've been working with them. No overarching negative comments or anything against the overall development. And while it is a conventional rezoning, the petitioner has worked to start putting together a preliminary plan of potential proposed use and has been willing to share that with some of the adjacent community owners there in the area. So with that, happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Any questions? Motion to close? Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to agenda item number 47. Petition number 2023-102 by TriPoint Homes Holdings, Inc. The location is approximately 9.07 acres located along the northeast side of Lawyers Road, south of Albemarle Road in District 5, Ms. Molina's district. The current zoning is OFC and CG. The proposed zoning is NC. Staff recommends the approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Mr. Colin Brown, Sean Shuttler, and Margaret Puckett will have three minutes in aggregate to address the petition. Thank you.
Petition 2023-102 is located along the northeast side of Lawyers Road, south of Albemarle Road. Site is approximately 9.07 acres and is currently undeveloped. Site is zoned OFC, Office flex campus. Proposed zoning is NC, Neighborhood Center, a conventional district. 2040 policy map recommends the Neighborhood Center place type. NC district is consistent with the Neighborhood Center place type. This is a conventional rezoning petition. There's not an associated site plan. Would permit any uses allowed in the NC zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the petition as the NC district allows for typically smaller mixed-use areas that provide convenient access to goods, services, dining, and residential offers a transition between the surrounding uses and the nearby retail, office, and warehouse uses. I'm happy to take any questions following Mr. Brown's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, any committee members, Colin Brown on behalf of the petitioner, TriPoint Homes. As Max mentioned, this is a conventional petition. We did host a community meeting, and interestingly, as you heard, existing zoning is commercial zoning. We had several attendees at the community meeting. While the NC district, I'd almost call it a downzoning, and while there is not an associated site plan, TriPoint is a residential builder. I think the folks appreciated that direction it was going, that that's what this district allows. Happy to answer any questions. This is my team's third petition in District 5 tonight, so East Side is picking up.
East Side.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments? Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Really quickly, so because I didn't attend the meeting, Colin, can you give me a little bit of feedback of what the residents were saying?
Generally, questions, you know, about, and partially, they wanted to learn the current zoning, which changed in June, so we spent a little time explaining the office zoning and the CG zoning. I think the zoning they were finding, we did talk a little bit about what might happen with the pond on the property, which I think folks don't love, but generally, it was well-received.
Okay. And I do see some notes here, which I'm happy to see that it was attended by a few community members, but the Charlotte Water notes, is that something that staff is, I see the notes from Charlotte Water, is there anything?
Yes, so they typically provide notes about access. It would be on the, you know, development teams. They'd be, their responsibility to tap into the water and sewer systems.
Okay, that's all I have. It looks pretty cut and dry to me. That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem. Motion to close?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposition? That is unanimous. We move on to agenda item number 48. Petition number 2023-107 by Range Water Development LLC. The location is approximately 12.75 acres located along the east side of Otondo Avenue, the south side of Robinson Crest, north of North Tryon Street in District 1, my district. The current zoning is ML2. The proposed zoning is TOD NC. Staff does not recommend approval for this petition in its current form.
Tim?
This petition was deferred.
This one deferred?
48 deferred.
Okay, great. Excellent. Sorry, I didn't have that in my notes. Then we'll move on to number 49. Agenda item number 49 is petition number 2023-105 by MJM Group Managers, Inc. The location is approximately 0.83 acres located.
I'm sorry, I think we skipped over the previous petition, 2023-105.
This, isn't this, this is 105, isn't it? Agenda item number 49?
I don't have the issues.
My agenda reads number 49 is petition number 2023-105.
105, yes.
Okay, that's what we're currently on. Okay, so I'll start over with the reading again. This is agenda item number 45. Petition number 2023-105 by MJM Group Managers, Inc. The location is approximately .83 acres located along the east side of Spear Boulevard and the northeast side of West Tybola Road in District 3, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is MUD O and the proposed zoning is CAC 1. Staff recommends the approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Mr. Brown, you will have three minutes to address this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Petition 2023-105 is approximately 0.83 acres located on the northern corner of the intersection of Tybola Road and Spear Boulevard. We're back in City Park neighborhood. Current zoning is MUD O. Requested zoning is Community Activity Center 1. The policy map recommends Community Activity Center place type. The request is consistent. It is a conventional petition with no site plan. Staff recommends approval, and I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, you're right that the slides on the screen were just not matching. That's why the number was off. But as mentioned, this is the City Park site, so this would be the third council member that my team has worked with, and this on City Park, so happy to work with you, Councilmember Brown, if you have questions. But this is, we worked with this Mayfield and this Watlington as well as this has gone through. And as mentioned, this is for essentially an out parcel. Current zoning, there's a MUD zoning on it now that allows a drive-through. The rezone to CAC is actually more restrictive on drive-throughs. It is consistent with the city's plan, so I think that is why staff has supported. We hosted a community meeting. It was not attended, which... It was, it was not attended, which has been typical at City Park for the commercial out front. Folks have not attended the ones that we've recently done there. So happy to answer questions. If you'd like to follow up after the meeting, just let me know.
Okay, great. Okay, I have a motion to close public hearing in a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We will move on to Agenda Item Number fifty. Fifty has been deferred.
All right.
Has fifty been deferred?
It has, well, fifty-one.
Excellent. So we'll, we'll push along to Agenda Item Number fifty-one, Petition Number 2023-108 by Beacon Partners. The location is approximately 8.6 acres located along the west side of Berry Hill Road, north of Freedom Drive, and east of Camp Green Street in District Two, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is ML one and ML two, and the proposed zoning is IMU. Staff recommends the approval of this petition and after staff's presentation, Mr. Brown, again, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
All right, a portion of Petition 2023-108 is located on the west side of Berry Hill Road, north of Freedom Drive and east of Camp Green Street, and the other is located on J Street, west of Wesley Village Road and north of Freedom Drive. The site is approximately 8.6 acres in total and is currently developed with three warehouses, two on this site, one on this. The site is zone ML one, oops, wrong button, on this portion of the site, and ML two on this portion. The proposed zoning is IMU, conventional district. 2040 policy map recommends Innovation Mixed Use or IMU place type. IMU zoning district is consistent with this place type. This is a conventional rezoning petition. There's not an associated site plan. Would permit any use allowed in the IMU district. Staff recommends approval of the petition as IMU aligns better with the policy map, permits a variety of uses that are in keeping with the character of the area. It's rapidly diversifying from heavy industrial to light industry, office, retail, and residential developments. Happy to take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. As Max mentioned, this area is currently zoned in our, what is our new heavy industrial zoning district. This is an area that continues to evolve into some softer uses, lighter commercial, and even residential. So this will bring these properties in line with the plan recommendations. We did have attendance at the community meeting. Neighbors liked that transition from the heavier uses to the lighter uses to continue that evolution. So that, and this is, this is my last petition of the year, so happy holidays to you all.
Happy holidays, Mr. Brown. I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of closing public hearing, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to Item Number fifty-two, Petition Number 2023-109 by 123 E27 LLC. That's a mouthful. Located approximately at point, point eight nine acres located along the northeast side of East Twenty-seventh Street, southeast of North Tryon, north of the link's blue line in District One, my district. The current zoning is ML two and the proposed zoning is IMU. Staff recommends this petition and after staff's presentation, Mr. Ferguson will have three minutes to address. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is just a little under an acre, along the east Twenty-seventh Street, north of the blue line, and just west of the core of the Noda neighborhood, as you can see in the aerial image. The site is currently zoned Manufacturing Logistics Two, and they are requesting to go to Innovation Mixed Use, which is consistent with the policy map's recommendation for Innovation Mixed Use at this site and the surrounding area. This is a conventional petition, so there is no associated site plan. The site is located along the North Graham, North Tryon Street corridor of opportunity area, which aims to revitalize the area with a mix of uses that can provide critical resources and businesses to neighbors. So this rezoning would allow the site's entitlements to be shifted away from industrial uses and instead to a more balanced mix of uses that could better align with the goals of that corridor. The IMU district is intended to be applied to sites such as these, which formerly hosted industrial uses but are transitioning away to an array of commercial, residential, and artisan industrial uses. Staff recommends approval of this petition, and I'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Russell Ferguson, here on behalf of the petitioner. Sad to see Colin leave because I was going to thank him for finally giving up the podium. I am, this is in alignment with policy, with staff support, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Any questions?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to, in a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to Agenda Item Number fifty-three, Petition Number 2023-110 by Savalec Homes, LLC, located approximately on 1.871 acres located along the south side of Susanna Drive, north of Hart Road, and west of Roswell's Ferry Road in District Two, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is N one A and the proposed zoning is N one D. Staff recommends this petition and after staff's presentation, Mr. Ferguson will again have three minutes to address.
Petition 2023-110 is located on the east side of Susanna Drive, north of Hart Drive, and west of Roswell's Ferry Road. Site is approximately 1.8 acres. Site is currently developed with a single-family home. Property is zone N one A, Neighborhood One. Proposed zoning district is N one D, Neighborhood One, conventional district. 2040 policy map recommends the Neighborhood One place type. N one D is consistent with this place type. This petition is conventional and, and there is not an associated site plan. Would permit any uses allowed in the N one D zoning district. Staff recommends approval of this petition as the N one D district aligns with the policy map, development pattern prescribed by the Neighborhood One place type, and permitted by the N one D zoning district is consistent with the character of the area. Happy to take any questions following Mr. Ferguson's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, Russell Ferguson, here on behalf of the petitioner. As you hear from staff, matches the area plan, has staff support, and I'm here for any questions you may have, and happy holidays and thank you for your service.
Happy holidays. Any questions?
Motion to close.
Second. I have a motion to close in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to Agenda Item Number fifty-four, Petition Number 2023-115 by East Group Properties, LP. The location is approximately 5.716 acres located along the north side of Entrance Drive and the east side of Gable Road, south of Shopton Road in the ETJ, in the Board of County Commissioners, District Two, Ms. Leaks' district, closest to Councilmember Brown, District Three. The current zoning is I one C D A N D O. The proposed zoning is ML one A N D O. Staff recommends this petition and after staff's presentation, we will have John Carmichael and Ron Coffey. They will have three minutes to address the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Petition 2023-115 is approximately 5.7 acres located on the north side of Entrance Drive and the east side of Gable Road, south of Shopton Road. Current zoning is I one C D. It's within the airport noise disclosure overlay. And requested zoning is ML one with the airport overlay carrying forward. 2040 policy map recommends Manufacturing and Logistics place type. Petition is consistent with that place type recommendation. There is no conventional petition, no associated site plan, and I'll take any questions after petitioner's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, members of City Council's zoning committee, John Carmichael, on behalf of the petitioner, East Group Properties. You did a thorough presentation, so we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to move to close.
Second.
I have a motion to close in a second. All in favor to close public hearing? Any opposed?
Happy holidays. See y'all.
That is unanimous. Happy holidays, Mr. Carmichael. That's for sure.
Fifty-five deferred?
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number fifty-five, Petition Number 2023-116 by Stanley Martin Homes. The location is approximately 10.003 acres located along the west side of Steel Creek Road, north of Long Talon Way, and south of Hamilton Road in District Three, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is N one A. The proposed zoning is N two A. Staff recommends this petition and I, yep, we have Ms. Grant and Bob Bennett will have three minutes to address the petition after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is 10 acres along the west side of Steel Creek Road in an area where there's a number of vacant parcels mixed in with some single-family developments. The site is currently zoned Neighborhood One A. I mean, they are proposing to go to Neighborhood Two A, which is consistent with the adopted Neighborhood Two place type for this area that's just north of the single-family residential area to the south of the site there. This is a conventional petition, so there is no associated site plan. The Neighborhood Two zoning district allows for the development of attached dwellings with a lower intensity as compared to the other N two districts. And given the policy map's consistency and the request for the least intense N two districts, staff recommends approval of this petition, and I'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, members of the zoning committee. My name is Bridgette Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Moran Van Allen and pleased to be here tonight with Bob Bennett with Stanley Homes, Stanley Martin, sorry. Staff's done a phenomenal job and it's been a long night, so I am pleased to say this is consistent with the adopted land use policy and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Any questions? Mr. Driggs?
So how do you measure 10.003 acres approximately?
It's up to our G I S.
How much is that precisely?
It's very precise, very precise, very precise.
Right, second. Okay, thank you. I have a motion to close in a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We move on to, thank you, Ms. Grant, we move on to Petition Number fifty-six, I mean, Agenda Item Number fifty-six, Petition Number 2023-119 by Lockstar LLC. The location is approximately 0.593 acres located along the north side of Cannon Avenue and the east side of North Graham Street, south of Oneida Road in District One, my district. The current zoning is N one B. The proposed zoning is N two A. Staff recommends this petition and after staff's presentation, Ms. April Atkinson will have three minutes to address. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is just over half an acre along the east side of North Graham Street and the north side of Cannon Avenue at the intersection there. And as you can see in the aerial image, it's, this is not a large tract of residential development that this site is situated in, and this portion of North Graham Street corridor hosts a number of industrial, commercial uses among the smaller pockets of residential areas. This site is currently zoned Neighborhood One B, and the petitioner is requesting to go to Neighborhood Two A. With the policy map calls for Neighborhood One, so this petition is inconsistent with that recommendation. It's a conventional petition, so again, there's no site plan. Staff believes that, given the adjacent commercial and industrial uses, a rezoning for this parcel to a Neighborhood Two district would not be very disruptive to the existing residential area. Additionally, moderate intensification is appropriate on corner lots such as this. And for those reasons and because this is a request for the least intense Neighborhood Two district, we believe that although inconsistent with the policy map, this request is generally appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the petition, and I'll take any questions following comments from the petitioner.
Thank you. Ms. Atkinson, you have three minutes.
Okay, great. Happy holidays. Thank you so much for hearing me, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the City Council, rezoning committee, and the entire chamber. I am April Atkinson. I'm here on behalf of Lockstar LLC. I'm an entrepreneur for the last 15 years and a Charlotte native. So I've been leasing space all over the city for the last decade and mostly in the Plaza Midwood area, but as of lately, moved to Graham Street. And once this property became available, I knew I needed to make purchase to stop paying rent. So the listing on this property said that it could possibly be rezoned for commercial use just because there's so many businesses around and it's located on a busy Graham Street on the corner of Graham and Cannon. I also live in the neighborhood, so I did host a community meeting that only three people attended, but I got to meet some neighbors. And I go to all of my Neighborhood Association meetings because I don't look far, and they are super supportive of what's happening, and they've seen the property just open up because it was, no one lived there, and there was trees and greenery growing and it's covered up. So we've done a lot to just open this space up and hopefully can benefit the community being there. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So this is in District One, but this used to be District Four. So I'm familiar with the area, and it's so nice to hear that the residents were supportive because if it's off Oneida, I think there was a development over there not long ago where the residents were very engaged. So it's really good to hear that they are supportive. Do we have a community report in the file?
Yes, I can send it to you if you need. It should also be posted online for this petition's webpage.
Okay. And it's also nice that you live in the area. So it's conventional. We don't get a lot of detail about it, but you're, you're wanting to purchase it for your office. Is that correct?
Sure. So I have a hair salon that I've had for the last 17 or 18 years, a very stable business and like helpful for the community and a cultural salon with a curly hair niche and things like that. So, yeah, so we're operating a hair salon. We have accessories. We have natural, organic products that we retail, home accessories. There are some new neighborhoods being built right behind us, so very accessible to the community and not too far from Uptown.
Okay, good. And that Graham area, that's a nice area. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Ms. Molina?
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. I also, I just, I want to congratulate you. I started my first business on Atando Avenue.
Okay.
Back in 2007, bought a second business on Graham Street.
Okay.
It's still operational, so you might see me every now and again. I'm very extremely familiar with the area. I know there's a lot of residential, you know, that's right behind here. I'm really glad that I actually know exactly where this house is. And if I'm not mistaken, closer to the train tracks, there's a, there's a hair salon already there, going up towards Atando.
There, there are a few salons, there are several salons.
I know I'm not crazy. I'm, you know, I'm a little rusty, but I'm thinking closer to the train tracks. I know there's a hair salon there. I can think of various places where we already have, you know, this sort of business. So I just want to tell you, congratulations on your leap of faith. I wish you success in your endeavor, and I am absolutely just excited to see this go forward and hear more about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Atkinson, right? Yes. Thank you so much for your time tonight and coming in. I'm like, I have to also, with Councilwoman Molina, I'm very excited that, to see you moving forward with your business endeavors and especially in this area. It's an area that's historic, born and raised in Charlotte, so just good to see that and say congratulations. I'm looking forward to supporting it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Driggs?
Ms. Atkinson, you did a great job tonight. Good job. Thank you for your patience. I'd also like to acknowledge my constituent Garland Green, who has outlasted the majority of council tonight. Garland, welcome and happy holidays to you.
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. It's wonderful to see you have the opportunity to open your business in District One and be so engaged with the community. And I've not heard anything negative about this process, and so that's indicative of the work that you've done to move forward. So thank you for your engagement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays. I believe everyone has had a chance to speak. I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor of closing public hearing, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. That is unanimous. Okay, so.
Unanimous.
So we are on our last agenda item of the evening. Agenda item number 57, petition number 2023-121 by Christian Brothers Automotive. The location is approximately 1.72 acres located on the west side of Steel Creek Road, south of Shopton Road, and north of Interstate 485, NVETJ, and the county commission district number 2, Mrs. Leaks' district, closest to city council district number 3, Ms. Brown's district. The current zoning is CG. The proposed zoning is CGCD. Staff recommends the approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Christian Otilianu will have three minutes to address the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. This petition is approximately 1.72 acres located on the west side of Steel Creek Road, south of Shopton Road, and north of Interstate 485. Current zoning is CG. The requested zoning is CG conditional. It might look a little funny. The, we'll get to the proposed use in just a minute. The 2040 policy map calls for commercial place type, so it's consistent with place type recommendation. The proposed use is a minor vehicle repair facility. That specific use in the UDO requires a conditional rezoning, which is why the reason for the request. It is consistent. Staff recommends approval. I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Otilianu?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, everybody here, present staff. My name is Christian Otianu. I'm with Gaskins-Lacroix in Atlanta, representing the petitioner, the future operator of the site, which is Christian Brother Automotive Incorporated. Can we get, yes, thank you very much. So a brief presentation, I'm sure that everybody's familiar with the site location. The scope of this petition is to request a conditional rezoning to the same existing general commercial zoning district, but conditional, in order to have an operation on the site as for a vehicle repair facility minor, and based on the UGO. Can you give to the next slide, please? There are already six prescribed conditions that we are fully complying with. And just a brief description of the existing conditions. The site is vacant, is actually out parcel, part of the Shopton Square Mall. It's undeveloped, it's vacant, the topography is fairly flat, there are no existing trees based on communication with various staff as head of Charlotte. The public utilities are already available, water and sewer. In terms of the zoning, if you can move on, please. The surrounding zoning is consistent, is all commercial CG, and then on the east side, Steel Creek, you have some heavy and light industrial. And then just for some overview of the site, taking certain photographs from the site from north, east, west, and south, just to outline the presence of the site in the context of the existing buildings for the Shopton Mall, and we've also included a preliminary technical site plan. This is it right here. You can see the proposed facility, which consists of 10 bays of vehicle repairs. The main entrance will be off the main street, Steel Creek, which is to the rear, off of that existing private access easement. There is a certain amount of surface parking provided for the facility. That's going to be subject to more refinement as we go with staff to, before applying for the actual development permits. Number of parking spaces is somewhere in the mid-range, and that, you know, as you may be familiar with the Christian Brothers Automotive facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Otilianu. Ms. Brown?
I'm not going to try to butcher your name, but, Mr. Christian, thank you so much for your presentation and hanging to be the last person. I'm very familiar with the area. I lived there, and let's see, is this going right near the CVS on the corner by the Goodwill?
It's going next to the Waffle House, I think that is the location.
Yeah, so beside the Waffle House or behind the Waffle House?
Besides.
Right there in the parking lot?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes, towards.
What's the proposed date?
It's a vehicle, small repairs facility, CBA, Christian Brothers Automotive. They do small vehicle repairs, and the facility is a building that will look mostly like a residential structure if you take a look at the elevations, and it's to fit the context, so it's a, it's a small structure that has 10 garage bays. That's pretty much what it is.
You said you're going to have 10 garage bays?
Yes, ma'am. Five on each side.
Okay, well, thank you so much for answering my questions.
Thank you.
I can walk to your shop, I live very close there.
Oh, you are?
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
Ms. Malina?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just, I got a quick question. I know I'm showing that the community meeting, there was no attendees.
That's correct. We scheduled that and published it for November the 1st, but there were no attendees.
Okay, and I know that, you know, we have a very engaged council member, and, you know, we all are going to, you know, be her teammates as she continues to, you know, work through this process and understand the intimacies of making these decisions, and she's already all over it because she's native to Charlotte. She know more than most of us in some cases. But I want to make sure that, you know, as far as the community meeting is concerned, this is a, is it adjacent to any type of residential area? Like, is there any residential area that?
Not really, across the, well, no.
It's not. I don't know those four corners.
Not that much, no. The whole zoning is CG.
So the community, so this meeting would have only then, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The community then, the meeting would have only really involved business owners.
For the most part, that's correct, yes, yes.
Well, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions?
Join the round.
Do I have a motion to close? Motion to close?
Yeah, please.
I have the motion to close in second. All in favor of closing public hearing, raise hands. All right. All right. Any oppose? All right, I have a motion to adjourn. All, Christmas, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everyone.
Happy New Year. Yeah, I guess I sure will.